All the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, February 29, 2016, to order. As we always do, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is Weekly Briefing. Do you have any weekly briefing items? Carolyn, can you tell us how the Community Center is doing? Oh, okay.
Thanks. I just wanted to give you a brief update and let you know that as of about 3:00 this afternoon, we have reached an agreement with the high school to allow our weight room members to work out from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the high school. The information is on our website. You can get the information at the Community Center as well. We are hoping that the weight room will be finished this week, but just for this interim time, we are grateful to the high school for letting our members work out. You do need to bring your Community Center weight room membership card. There is someone there at the weight room at the high school to check, so look for all the information. It's from 5:00 to 7:00 only, and the small weight room at the Community Center will still be open the regular hours, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
And Carolyn, could I just ask, what door in the high school do they go in?
Oh, thank you. It's if they park in the back of the building and go in right closest to where the weight room is, the weight room is located.
So it's like the cafeteria doors?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else have a weekly briefing? Lynda, did you have something?
Well, I was just going to say that I had a great time reading to the second and third graders today. We read Dr. Seuss all over the place, so we had a great time hopping on pop.
Maybe we'll have you, we'll put you on the agenda, and you could do that here? That'd be okay? Okay.
I feel they were reading to her.
Yeah, pretty much. They're pretty smart kids.
Anybody else have a weekly briefing? I'll just remind everybody tomorrow's an election day, so the polls are open at 7:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the correct time? Yeah, at the Community Center. So all the voting takes place at the Community Center, so please go vote. All right, any public comment announcements tonight? A gentleman rising, oh, he's just getting comfortable, I think. Okay. All right, we'll move on to consent agenda. Janelle?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve minutes from February 10, 2016, regular meeting. Approve the application for the road race by National Multiple Sclerosis Society for September 9, 2016. Approve application by local flavor lunch and bagel for Route 124 for 10:00 a.m. opening time on Sundays.
Second.
Moving to second, to approve the consent agenda as presented discussion. Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, to vote? Thank you. Okay. Next is public hearings and presentations. I'll just introduce this topic. It's labeled as West Harwich/Route 28 Forum Vision, Plan, Status, and Schedules. I think over the course of the last couple of years, this board has heard of a number of initiatives in the West Harwich area, and by that I mean, by the way, do you have the graphic that you're going to throw up on the map, please? A number of initiatives that have been started on different activities in West Harwich in an effort to try and, I'll just say, improve the neighborhood. Let's call it that. Some of these things we hear about and read about in the newspaper. Some people come to us and make presentations. You know, we've had a lot of discussion in this board going way back when on the Willow Street property, which is, I'll just say, sat around and I will say, unused for several years. We've had lots of discussion on the West Harwich School. We've had some discussion here with the folks who are attempting to work with the historic district out there. We noticed some of the Hetch and the Habitat stuff because, in my case, I read about in the newspaper, but what I decided to do is to put this on the agenda with the board's consent, to bring all those parties in here and allow everybody to have a 10-minute presentation to tell us what they're doing, what their vision is, you know, what their plans are, what the status of what they're trying to get done out there is, and see if we can't get people working, you know, cooperatively together for the good of that area. And so we're talking about here, the graphic up here, the Herring River basically is on the extreme right-hand side, and the line at Dennisport is on the right, excuse me, the left-hand side, and it's Route 28, which is the corridor going through there, and those are the properties that constitute that area. So that's just a plot plan, basically. So, we're going to go through these things one at a time, I'm giving everybody and their names identified here, 10 minutes. We're going to hold any discussion, any questions till the end, including the board, please, and then we'll circle back and have as much discussion as people would like. So with that, Chris, would you start? The road improvements?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this overview does provide a good understanding for folks for some of the discussion. Obviously, this is Route 28, hopefully that cursor's up there, and the area that we've actually highlighted, at least for this presentation, is from the Dennisport town line up until the Herring River. What we'll do is, we can put that graphic back up. The selectmen were approached probably about six months ago, at this point, to talk about, essentially, what can we do with the Route 28 corridor? And in that, we have contracted with VHB to do an initial study. The idea behind this is that we will be back to the board to specifically go over this, so this is really a very preliminary design. The concept, or not even design, just feasibility. This feasibility came from a, we did a site walk. Actually, we had probably about 20 to 25 people join us on the site walk. We walked the entire length of the corridor, and then the folks from VHB went to kind of commit this to a concept plan. Some of the features, just in the concept plan, I know I'm doing this not in the right order, but on, this stretches the one by the curve. I think that's the First Baptist Church. The concept here is to have the sidewalk kind of go off into a green strip along. This area is actually an area of right-of-way that's very, very wide, so we have the ability to take some of the people and not have them right on the roadway, and they can get off the road into this green strip. So the idea is to kind of narrow the roadway. I think narrowing the roadway, too, has the concept of kind of slowing down some vehicle traffic.
Chris, you want to point her?
So as you see, we have some elements of having some plantings, and then one of the things that we had talked about during the site visit was over by the First Baptist Church, have some kind of congregation area or an area for, what do they call it, wayfinding, kind of informational location where you can have an area set up so if there's people that want to stop and look or find out what is there to do in the area, there'll be information that could be located here. So just off of this is the West Harwich School right behind, so that's one where people could be referenced there, and obviously, as you'll hear later this evening, there's several concepts about the historic homes. Just on that walkway in the green strip, you can see this is on the southern side of 28, and again, the idea is to try to narrow this up a little bit so the traffic tries to go a little bit slower through there. What this graphic shows is, it shows again the length of the corridor, so you can see here's the intersection of Division Street and Mass., I'm sorry, Main Street on 28, so the beginning of the project here, and then it works its way down. What the graphic on the bottom here shows is that the section that's AA, which is actually really just this short section, is, I don't really want to call it necessarily an urban area, but a little bit more built up, a little bit more of a commercial area, that there will be a certain type of treatment that will be done in that stretch. Here you have, we have to have, in order to get funding, some bike lanes have to be a requirement if we're going to obtain what's called TIP funding, Transportation Improvement Program funding, and that is money from the federal government. A lot of what this plan, this initial concept is, is to try to use the existing right-of-way, but just to make it a little bit more friendly for not only vehicles, but also bikers and then pedestrians on the sidewalk. And you can see the other section, which has many of the historic homes and a lot more residential, so really, the majority of this, it would have a secondary treatment in which the idea would be to have a grass strip, a sidewalk, and then the bike lane. The bike lane is a requirement under the TIP funding. So you can see that here, there's a little bit more, it's kind of hard to see in this graphic, but you have a little bit of a grass strip that is designed to kind of have a little bit better separation. So that concept was something that was presented to the board for coming up with those and then presenting it, so the concept would be to do it. The other thing, just to highlight, we are looking at, working with the town of Dennis, they have a project where, right about off the map here, they've done considerable improvements to Dennisport, and they have left this area alone, that intersection. So if we do a regional application with the town of Dennis and do intersection improvements here, I guess we own half the intersection, they own the other half, by doing a regional transportation grant application, we have a greater likelihood of getting funding in a timely fashion. So that's kind of the rationale for doing that piece.
Chris, do you have a schedule on activities there, Chris?
They should be in, hopefully, in March or April, so they're, they'll be in before the board, and maybe we'll do it as kind of a public information meeting so we get more information in. The next item that I wanted to talk about, this is probably not a bad map to show, is I was asked to look into the concept of, okay, what are we doing on Willow Street? I know we had maps in the Selectmen's meeting package. One of the things that we have, this is the Willow Street site right here, Willow Streets to the south. The concept on Willow Street is that it is a town-owned parcel. The problem is, is that there are three dwelling units that have either the dwelling unit itself or the ancillary buildings are actually not where they're, not where they are according to the lines. So we have a problem with the reconciliation of, we have deeds that show, actually, this building up here is on the other parcel, and both of these buildings in this area are on the other parcels. So we have, I had initially worked with our attorney to see if we could lay out what is the strategy, how do we clean this up? Most likely, it would be to identify those three parcels that are privately owned, that have private residents on them, or ancillary buildings related to those residents, and to basically fix the lines so they make sense. And then what that will do is that then we'll leave a section that will be clean for town and clean for development purposes, or whatever the town chooses to do with it. So there's quite a bit of work that has to be done to basically identify where do the parcels make sense? How, we want to make sure that a lot of these parcels are currently non-conforming, so how do we minimize that non-conformance, if that's the right term? And then how do we proceed with creating a parcel for the town to be able to move forward with? And then the last item, Mr. Chairman, I think that you wanted me to talk about was, and I know that there'll be a presentation right after me for the Hetch property in combination with Habitat, and I just wanted to, I was asked to provide some information that the Board of Selectmen did adopt a policy for the Harwich Affordable Housing Fund. It identified various funding sources. The most resilient funding source, or the one that continues to generate funding, is a cell tower lease, that some of the proceeds from that cell tower lease go into this fund. I did check with the town accountant, as of the end of January, there was $219,716 in the account. So 219-716. Just, I know for the information on the next, I think the request was $300,000, and if we only have 219, then that does create a little bit of a concern, obviously. And then on the authorization for expenditure, I just wanted to kind of highlight that the application or the, I guess, request for expenditures would be made directly in writing to the Board of Selectmen, and then the Selectmen would refer it to the various housing committees, the Housing Committee and the Housing Authority, give them 14 days to consider the material or have the material back to the board within 14 days, and then the board would hold a meeting in which they would vote to approve the expenditure, and that requires a vote of a majority of the Board of Selectmen. If the procedure wants to be fast-tracked, if you would, you can have, it appears in the materials, you can have one meeting in which the Housing Authority and the Housing Committee could come before the Selectmen and do it in one meeting. That would require unanimous vote of the Board of Selectmen to do a expedited process, I guess is what the terminology is that's used. So I just wanted to give a overview for those three items. I don't know if I kept that all, three of them, to 10 minutes, but hopefully that was fairly good.
Just listen to 10 minutes, yeah.
Okay. I don't, you want to hold for questions at the end, Mr. Chairman? Is that the idea?
Yep. And that policy, if people want copies of that, they can get it down in the office, right?
Yeah, and we do have it on the website.
Okay.
Policy is in total in the website.
Okay. And it is called, I just, so if anybody wants to write it down, it's Board of Selectmen Policy, Harwich Affordable Housing Fund. I assume that's the file it's called, or what it's called on the website. Actually, next we're going to do, huh?
I'm just calling that up.
Okay. Next is David Spitz with, and Jim Atkinson, Planning and Zoning. Oh, you are, Jim? How are you? Good evening.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The planning board is in the preliminary stages of beginning to look at planning and zoning issues in the West Harwich area. This is being done as part of a larger effort to sort of review the issues with regard to the entire Route 28 corridor as it stretches from Chatham all the way to Dennisport. As you may or may not know, the entire Route 28 corridor is currently zoned commercial, and I think what we want to do at this point is take a look at that current zoning, take a look at, you know, sort of what we feel would be beneficial for the town, and then have discussions with various stakeholders, with members of the Board of Selectmen, and then also with the public in general, in order to sort of figure out whether or not the current zoning should be changed, and if so, how it should be changed. Some of our initial concepts that we're looking into involve sort of creating more well-defined villages in three sections along Route 28. David has just passed out to you a plan of a preliminary definition of the village area that we're talking about in West Harwich, which basically stretches from the Herring River going east to approximately the area of Holy Trinity Church. In addition, we have identified sort of a separate but similar area adjacent to the town of Dennis, in the area that Chris was referring to as the commercial area just over the line into Harwich. This area, I'm personally viewing more of an extension of the village of Dennisport than of West Harwich, but in looking at the entire 28 corridor and potential zoning issues, we felt we needed to incorporate this, and we're looking at a sort of a removed but similar type of issue to what we see happening in what we're defining as the West Harwich Village. The concept that we're looking at is, again, trying to concentrate future commercial development in the identified village areas, potentially adjusting the density, you know, allowing for mixed use in those areas, and sort of trying to direct and encourage future economic development, you know, and commercial development into these village areas to create more visible and more identifiable villages. With the addition of some of the sidewalks that Chris was talking about, hopefully, this also encourages areas where people would enjoy walking to, and with the sidewalks, it would be a safe walk to get there. Trying to encourage the commercial development in these village areas, we're also talking about being more restrictive about development in the areas that would not be part of the commercial villages. What we're looking at is whether it would be possible to create a more sort of residential environment, you know, sort of allowing for residential, encouraging residential, allowing for also uses that are compatible with residential, such as home offices, maybe gift shops, small guest houses, things of that nature. You know, in doing this, we're also looking at whether the allowable density for residential should be adjusted, you know, in this area along Route 28, both to compensate for at least a theoretical loss in value for the more restricted commercial uses, but also to, again, enforce the village-type concept and a residential area where there would be some density where people might be encouraged to walk to the village areas, and, you know, have a nice experience of taking a walk on a nice afternoon, you know, and to get a cup of coffee or a newspaper or, you know, whatever is available in those villages. The status of this effort is that it's in the very preliminary stages. The planning board has held two workshops in order to try to get input in the initial stage. Unfortunately, these workshops were not well-attended. One was probably because we had a weather issue with a snowstorm that day, but, you know, also, I think probably it's an issue that at that time wasn't being focused on by most of the residents in the town. So therefore, David and I decided what we needed to do was to try to further flush out the concepts we were talking about. And again, we have flushed it out with regard to the identification of the village areas, and we're now in the process of trying to add some of the details with regard to uses, dimensional requirements, density, height requirements, et cetera. When we get that process completed and at least have a draft, what we would like to do is get together with the stakeholders, you know, all along Route 28, but in West Harwich, it would clearly be the group that is supporting, you know, this historic district. We also would like to get together with the Harwich Chamber of Commerce and get their, you know, sort of input into our process. Now, clearly, any commercial development that exists today, no matter what we do and changes, would be grandfathered in and would be allowed to continue as it does today. Following that type of input, we would like to come back to the Board of Selectmen and just have a general, open discussion with regard to basically what our proposals are and what we're hearing from, you know, the input that we're getting around the town. Assuming that the Board of Selectmen are at least generally on board with the concepts that we're talking about, we would then begin a more intensive public participation process, you know, actively soliciting both, you know, participation from groups, from individuals, from whosever interested. And we would then have that participation process. After that process, we would then review the draft and make any changes that we thought were relevant with regard to the input we were receiving, and, you know, then, at that stage, we would consider whether we'd be ready for a formal public meeting and a formal proposal to town meeting. As, you know, with regard to how I see that being scheduled at this point, as I mentioned, David and I are just trying to finish up putting the details on the proposal so that people will have something to react to. We hope to do that during the month of March, and we hope to begin the process of having meetings with the stakeholders, you know, during the month of March. Following the initial meeting with stakeholders, we would then like to come back to the Board of Selectmen. I know that we would then be getting into town meeting and town election season, so that process, due to your constraints, may be delayed until after the town election, and then start thinking about a public participation process that would go through the summer and into the early fall.
So, Jimmy, I don't want to, well, I guess I'll just speculate that you're not going to take Sunday town meeting until 2017, is that probably correct?
I think 2017 would be the earliest. If everything goes well, I would be projecting that we would be going to town meeting with any proposed zoning changes in May of 2017.
All right. Thank you. David, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Okay.
Okay. All right. So that's planning and zoning. Next, the Hetch Houses and Habitat Proposed Reuse. Adara, how are you?
Ricky's right here, Ricky. I'm right on that.
This is not Robin, this is not Robin Wilkins.
Yeah. You're on Susan Goshen.
Okay, I'm just teasing. Okay. So, good evening.
Okay.
Why don't you introduce your team so everybody in the audience and at home will know who you are?
Thank you. My name is Lee D'Arzola. I'm part of the land acquisition and permitting team at Habitat for Humanity. We also have Vicki Goldsmith, our executive director, just in from Fort Worth, Susan from Hetch, and a great variety of Habitat and Hetch supporters in the audience. And let me just get to slideshow here. There we go. I'm going to run through some of these slides fairly quickly because of your time limit. Just don't be concerned that there's a whole lot of them. I'll get through them fast.
Yep.
Just want to take a couple seconds to start off with the Habitat program. Our mission is that Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod works in partnership with families in need to build hope, homes, lives, and community. I think it's always important to start these off with what our mission is and then how we go about achieving that mission. Our program is sweat equity. We work in partnership with our families, households, devote 250 to 500 hours building their home. That depends whether it's a one-outlet family or a two-outlet family. That's a lot of time. It's a process where we all work together and grow together. It's a community engagement. We work with our homebuyers, offering education and support. I'm fair, I still feel like I'm fairly new to Habitat. I've been with Habitat for about four years, and every time, I learn something new about what we do with our families. There's, you know, the building education, but there's also mortgage, there's landscaping, there's budgeting, there's how to be an effective part of a homeowners association. It's a full program. Our homeownership prices are very affordable. $126,000 is the current price for a two-bedroom, $140 for a three-bedroom, and the affordability is in perpetuity. The homes are protected with the state deed rider. I tend to talk about deed riders a lot, but it's really about houses. This is the Harwich Blitz Build, one home, one family, one week, that closed in October, was it, Vicki?
Yep.
Yep, yep, yep. And I'm also reminded when I put these slides together that I tend to be in permitting, and I think about units. It's not units, it's families. So this is our amazing Blitz Build family. To give a little bit of background about '93 and '97 West Main Street, and Susan, please pipe up if I'm getting, if you want to add anything. This was purchased by Hetch in 2008. I think it's important to remember, this is a Bob Murray project. It was two, it is two lots, about two and a half acres. The original intention was 20 rental units with the demo of the older home, the Chase home. Between...
Excuse me, is that the one on the left or the right?
As your face. Yeah, on the left, okay. I'm not good at love and heights.
Thank you. That's okay. Thank you.
Between 2008 and now, there have been some drastic changes in the affordable housing funding landscape. There's been changes in, there have been changes in Hetch's focus, a rising interest in the historic nature of the Chase home and Bob Murray's illness and passing, and with those changes, Hetch has looked for alternatives to the 20-unit rental development. Both homes, both lots, have been on the market since 2015, listed at $389 for the Chase home and $289 for the Ranch home. These are, the one on the left is the Chase home, the one on the right is the Ranch. Those are just pictures from the assessor's records. The project that we are envisioning, there's a memo of understanding, an MOU between Hetch and Habitat. Habitat would use 40B permitting to create new lots. We would take the back portion of the property. Our goal would be four to six affordable homes with an access drive likely on the west edge of the property. This leaves the front two lots, Chase and the Ranch, with Hetch, and Hetch's intent is to issue an RFP, a Request for Proposal, for a historic preservation for Chase, to look for a qualified entity to take on the project. look for a qualified entity to take on the project. A note on this RFP, because we've had some questions on that. It's not a Habitat RFP, it will be a Hetch RFP. The Habitat development enables Hetch to offer Chase at a significantly lower price. That was one of the benefits we saw. The RFP is an opportunity and a possibility for a historic entity to preserve. And there have also, I think, been some misunderstandings from various presentations we've made or some information that's in the community. Habitat is not proposing a demo of Chase. So it's not a Habitat demo, it's not Habitat ownership of Chase. And it's also not a setup for failure. There's been some information about a project we did in Orleans that we've actually brought forward, that we've done this model. In Orleans, the historic home was not preserved, but that was because no eligible entity stepped up to the plate to do it. So here, we're hoping for a different outcome. I mean, there is a great support for historic, as you can see by all the people here. So we are hoping for a much different outcome, but the historic end, we're affordable housing folks. That's not our end. We want the back. Sometimes I've heard this argument framed as Habitat or Chase. There were some lawn signs that said, "Save Chase, stop Habitat." We, we've always felt that this is an or, that it's not an or, I'm sorry, that it's an and, it's a Habitat and Chase. And so that's really how we're trying to frame this, because that's how we see it. The process, we are looking for community support, we're looking for acquisition funding. So we're coming to what we, what your process has, the Housing Authority, the Housing Committee, and the Board of Selectmen, to see about community support. Once we know it's there in the form of funding, we'll do our feasibility, we'll do our permitting, we'll do our engineering and site planning, we will prepare a local initiative program application. This application, the process for it, is a submission to the Housing Committee and the Board of Selectmen. So this is by no means a blank check. You will be tired of seeing us if this goes forward, because we'll be back here with our application, with our site plan, we'll be back in front of the zoning board of appeals. So there's a lot of community input about specifics as the process goes on. And only after we are fully permitted will the acquisition funds be released. So the town of Harwich is very protected in terms of their funds. We've had a lot of questions about where's the site plan. Again, we're looking for support, we're looking for an indication on a policy level that this is welcome in the community. At this point, that's the site plan, that's, there was a clicker somewhere, but where the circle is, that's the back portion.
Need a pointer?
I think people can pretty much see. This is an example of a already-built Habitat neighborhood in Brewster. This is Jamesburg, that is where the circle is, has four homes on an acre. And that's a picture of it. I love, Vicki pointed me to this picture, I just love it. That's a year into it, it's just a great, great neighborhood, and again, because it's about people, this is one of the families. We are an experienced developer. We have built and sold 94 affordable homes throughout the Cape since 1988. We are currently in a very robust period. We have 21 active and open building permits, six of those being on Oak Street. We have 27 homes in pre-development. We know what we're doing. Just some pictures here, I love this one because it's just such a great family, and I know Vicki's a big dog fan. But I think it's also important to show, this is the Federal Home Loan Bank, Boston, a funding source. This is their annual report. They put our project on the cover. In the past four years, they've funded us over $750,000. You don't get that kind of funding unless you have a solid model. This is a sample of one of our homes, I think this might be in Orleans as well, I just want to show this one because of the porch. This is Truro, and this one is Falmouth. This is a duplex, this is two homes on 10,000 square feet. And again, part of the planning process, working with the community, what type of density do you want? We, with our experts, think four to six homes. We want to hear from the community. Six homes could be in this kind of style, which, you know, we like to do what the community wants us to do. We think of this as the win-win-win-win, I might have missed a win, community-wide benefit, West Harwich benefit. Homeownership is stability. We feel our neighborhoods are welcomed in neighborhoods. For Habitat, it's a win. For Hetch, I think this one's really important, the site gets developed for Bob Murray's original intent. And on the historic end, again, it's that concept that we see this as an and, you know, with the Habitat development, Hetch can then offer Chase via RFP at a reduced price. I'll just quickly go through, this is our call to action. This proposal has unanimous support from the Harwich Housing Committee and the Harwich Housing Authority. We are seeking $300,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund. Without this money, the project will not happen. The 300,000, as Chris mentioned, it's not in the account now. We have used this account before and received an approval of an amount, and then it accrues, and when it's accrued, we can then access the funds, which works well with our timing in terms of the community process of permitting. And then, let me see if I get this right, Harwich residents? Oh, now is when I need the pointer.
I wouldn't...
Yeah. Let's, if I had the pointer, I could point out, I think we have...
That's right.
What we do is about people, it's about community, and we seek your support, and thank you. And I think I kept it to 10 minutes.
Okay, could you just go back to the site plan, just for a second?
The site plan...
I just said one...
This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just so I understand, because I think, the two properties that Hetch has are these two lots?
Correct.
These long lots, so this, this is the Chase house?
Correct.
Because now I'm looking, if I flip myself upside down, this is on the left and this is on the right? And I think I heard you said, say, I'm sorry, in this area back here, how would this get separated? This would become four to six units, right?
Correct.
And would this become one parcel, or how would that work?
We would use Mass. General Law Chapter 40B, which allows us certain flexibilities with local zoning to create separate fee simple absolute lots.
Okay.
So it would be four to six lots and an access road.
Okay, and I think I heard you say you were going to build, was it a road or a driveway? I don't remember which it was you said, on the west side?
And that may involve the demolition of that ranch home.
But this is, this is where you're talking about coming in here?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just trying to understand.
No, thank you for asking.
All right. Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we had the West Harwich Schoolhouse. Lou, you gonna do this? Yep?
I bring my own technical assistance.
Who's that?
I don't have...
Oh, we don't have anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have anything. It's not anything.
I thought it was me.
Nope. And just to be clear, Lou, this is not in our packet, so the board hasn't seen this yet that I know of.
Thank you, Peter.
Introduce yourself and you...
Members of the board, I'm Lou Urbano. Before I start, I'd like to point someone out in the audience, and that's Larry, who used to be chair of the BOS. And the reason why I want to point him out is this one...
Larry Valentine?
Yeah, that's him.
Okay.
Larry, do you want to stand up a second?
No, he really doesn't want to, but...
The reason why I've asked him to stand is this process with the West Harwich Schoolhouse started right after Angelo stopped being chair, and Larry took over, and that's when he gave me the name of Pain in the Neck. And Linda up there is smiling, but she also is very instrumental, and she sat at a training meeting with me on this, getting CPC funds, and said, "If you want the money, Lou, you better do the work." And so there is a complete report that was turned in, and I believe most of the members of the BOS received it at that time. If not, I'll be happy to send it out again so that everybody has a copy of that. But this is basically an overview of that report. We're looking at the West Harwich Schoolhouse, which basically has had 25 years of neglect and failed attempts to fix it. I point out even the chimney, which is not really made out of brick, but just an aluminum piece sticking out, or galvanized metal. What we hope to do is bring it back to the way it was on the exterior, and that includes the chimney, because the brick goes all the way up to the roof line, but that's the way it'll work. And what we hope to do with this building is nothing more, and this is an example of what we want to build. This boat, I will build, this is my boat. This is the one that I'm paying for to have built, and it's the first one that will be built that gives us funding to build another one. The project itself is to uplift our community, it's a starting point. It's a simple project, it's basically restore the historic exterior. The interior is just basically a warehouse. The West Harwich Schoolhouse is more than just a building to us that live there. It's a catalyst for Captain's Row development. It's a model, hopefully, for future projects that town does through a cooperative venture of volunteers, the town, some priming the pump money, and moving forward. Here's some of the questions that we needed to answer before we started. Is the building worth saving? Because when Chris came to town, it showed up on the capital plan for demolition. Can a use be found that brings value, not just to West Harwich, but to all of Harwich? How can this project be accomplished in a cost-effective and timely manner? Will enough revenue be generated to pay operational budget for the building and the planned use, as well as ongoing maintenance? What organization or person is going to be responsible for the rehabilitation work? And who's got the ongoing responsibility after rehabilitation? One person was nice enough to say, "What happens if you die, Lou?" I didn't appreciate that question. We started, we started off with some...
Give us the answer?
The answer, I don't intend on dying. The fundamental documents, what we used as a foundation was the coastal engineering report that was done, that was done in 2007, and basically it stated that the building was sound. We also went to both our, to Sean Libby, as well as to Bob Cafarelli in engineering, and asked them to look at the building, which they did with us, and they affirmed that the building was sound. We took a look at the A.M. Fogarty and Associates' report of 2008. They broke down the cost of fixing a building so that we know how many two-by-fours need to be purchased, how many shingles, and the cost of each. We, again, went to the town and said, "Are these prices that were done in 2008 still accurate today?" The answer was yes. We then went to the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and that house does, the schoolhouse can be on registry. We looked at the sample license agreements that the town had done to see if we could live with them. We put together a timetable for completion of the project, a cost analysis, revenue generator, and support from various groups. Cost to renovate, we are asking for $203,950 from CPC funds. CPC, on an almost unanimous vote, gave us approval. A.M. Fogarty report, forgive me, wanted 1.1 million to do the project, that's what they estimated at. Question came up, "How can you do it for so much less?" Remember the new model. First, we went to Bill Cafarelli, who has a general contractor's license with the report. He took out the profit and the fees. It was going to cost approximately $400,000, we figured, to finish the project with him. We applied for a cultural matching grant through the town. We went to Cape Cod Tech. We asked them, "Which items could the technical school do, and what would it cost us to get them done?" Got an email from them stating they could do these various projects, and they would charge 25% over the cost of material. So we used that as an estimate to come up with cost. We went to the corrections department after that. We asked them what they could do, and that's when there was a smile put on all our faces. They've got the scaffolding material to go all around the whole building, they can take out all the old wood, scrape, they can do approximately 70% of all the work, and the costs are lunches every day. Volunteers from local...
Lou, you're talking about the sheriff's department, is that what you're talking about there?
Yes, yes. The volunteers from local trades have stepped forward. We have a gentleman even from the heating and air conditioning who wants the volunteers' time and so forth to get that project done. Discounts on building materials, I think I've proven I can do that. Inside of the building involves minimal work, it's like a warehouse. Historic preservation doesn't mean that the inside has to be preserved the way it was. The outside envelope is what's important for us. Here's just an example of what we went through, and this is just the exterior, it shows you the, if you just look at the top line, the yeses and no, by the way, yeses mean that the tech school said yes, no, they couldn't do the work. If you just take extending the chimney, retail price, which is on the report, was 5,000, $750 for the bricks, 250 to get it done, but now we have a gentleman that'll do the brick work, a professional, and he'll do it for free, so we saved $250. All the way through the process, and you can go down, you can get these figures and look at them, there's nothing left out. And if you go from these figures to the report, it'll tell you exactly how many bricks have to be bought, and at what price. And this is the interior work, it's all there. Okay, so what's the use of the building? We have a selectman here that consistently looks at you and says, "What are you going to do with this whole thing?" And so, and with Larry, God bless him, I told him I'd have an answer for him in three months, which turned out to be a year, to come up with what we were going to do with it. First floor will house public bathrooms and a visitor's center. This will be the first public bathrooms in West Harwich, by the way. We plan on building again and displaying classic wooden boats. The second floor will house a museum featuring information on historic captains' homes in the area, stories of the families that helped to build Harwich, as well as maritime artifacts. Timeframe for completion? This project will be ready in its entirety in 18 months from funding, with the CPC funds and cultural grants being awarded. Contingency plans are in place should the grant not come to fruition. The first floor and the exterior, including all the grading work upstairs, would be completed. That allows for the public restrooms, the visitor's center, and the building and display of the wooden boats. The completion of the upstairs would be done at a later time with volunteers and additional grants, not coming back to the town for additional money. Operating costs for the building? We expect operating costs based on the number of properties the town owns to be approximately 8,000 per year. We expect revenue that's generated to be approximately 19,000. This does not include rentals, and we believe we can get rental incomes from that on the boats. They have to be built before you can rent them out, so it'll take some time. We understand revenue will ramp up, as will costs. We anticipate enough monies to be generated, generated to establish a maintenance fund. This keeps the building in good repair into the future. Therefore, it's not a town responsibility. We also expect to raise, oh, here. Now, how are you going to get the money for the first boat? The first boat will be built at the tech center, Cape Cod Tech. I intend on buying the first boat, that'll generate $2,000 in profit, which will give us enough money to build additional boats. This boat will be in the Herring River, so people can see it. You saw the boat in the first slides. The classic wooden boats will be raffled off, and we expect to raise $10,000 a year through a raffle. Building two boats per year with people that are enthusiasts, we expect to generate $4,000 total. Donations from people coming to see people working on building these boats, we estimate at about $1,000 a year. As time goes on, it's anticipated, again, we will rent the boats, and that won't be by us, we believe we have a person who wants to do a revenue share who's already in business. Plans also call for us raising $5,000 through donation, and that's to pay for all the tools that are necessary. A complete list of those is in the plan. Does expertise exist in the town to build these boats? The answer is yes. Numerous individuals working at local boatyards have... Numerous individuals working at local boatyards have expressed interest. The Hyannis Maritime Museum will train people who are not experienced. Cape Cod Tech has, is willing to work with us. Also, preliminary discussions have occurred on managing the program. In case Lou should die, then we have the, both the recreation department has been talked to, the Hyannis Maritime Museum has been talked to, and the Cape Cod Tech. All three of those organizations have expressed some interest. Especially the Maritime Museum. They set anywhere from running everything to just coming out and teaching us how to do it. Supporters of the project?
I gotta ask you to speed it up.
Okay, we're done. Supporters of the project, West Harwich and the Harwich in general, the Harwich Historical Commission will be part of the building process, Monomosh School, Chamber of Commerce, Recreation Department, and Cape Cod Tech. Thank you. How'd we do?
Okay, so one thing you didn't mention, one thing you didn't mention was the fact that, I don't know when it was, in the fall or whatever, it's late summer, whatever, we, we, this board issued an RFI-
Yes.
For the building.
Yep.
With the stated intent that the town would retain ownership of the building.
Correct.
Looking for someone or something to do what you're proposing here. And your group or team or you responded to that RFI. That has not been turned into a license at this point in time. That the, you know, I think we're talking about using the model that, that South Harwich Meeting House. And I think Dave Spitz and town administrator are working on something to that effect. But I guess at this point, the question is, who would that license be with? You know, is there, is there a group? Have you applied for something? Are you, is there an entity?
There's two ways of, that we're going to do it. The short, the, the short answer is there will be a legal entity made up of a five to six individuals that'll sign the license agreement and will be responsible. It'll be a subchapter S, moving into a 501 in the long term, because it takes about a year to get that done. We've also talked to the pastor of the church, who has a 501. If it doesn't interrupt or hurt his 501, he'd be willing to step up and do it with us. But we will have a legal entity when that lease is done.
Okay, all right. Actually, there'll be more questions when we get, when we get through that. Okay. So now you're gonna, are you doing the historic district?
No, no, no. Duncan Berry is-
Oh, Duncan's gonna, okay. All right, good, all right. Duncan Berry's gonna do the historic district concept. And if I understand it right, we're still talking again, the Herring River-
Correct.
To the Dennis Port Line. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm sure you'll show us that. And can you tell us why you didn't call it Selectmen's Room?
Good question.
You didn't vote yet.
Yeah, exactly.
Are you willing to entertain that now?
So where's the show view? I guess we'll just have to do it this way. Where's full screen?
Down, down a few more.
Oh, here it is, okay, sorry. So, my name's Duncan Berry. I'm a resident at, I own 37 Main Street, which is a Greek Revival's house, right down the road from what you're looking at, about tenth of a mile on the left. I am a, I was formerly a member of the Harwich Historical Commission, the Armistice Historical Commission. I was professor of architecture at RISD, Rhode Island School of Design, Brown University Graduate School in Art History, as well as the, as well as the College of Architecture at Roger Williams in Bristol, Rhode Island. I'm the fifth generation in my home. And I have a great, deep, abiding feeling for this place. And I wanted to share what we've put together voluntarily with about 50 other people in West Harwich and Harwich as a whole, this concept for Captain's Row. It's come out in dribs and drabs on our Facebook page, in Cape Cod, Cape Cotter, Cape Cod Times, The Chronicle especially. And we thought this would be a great opportunity to bring some of this forward and kind of show you what, under the rubric of vision, what we're working on. So I'm assuming everybody knows what, where we're looking at, right?
No.
See the church?
Are we looking west?
You're looking west, exactly. The reason why you know that is because these landmarks still exist. That picture is from 1908. And this fellow named Myrick Howard, who is a preservation specialist down in South Carolina, said, "If you have historic resources, its stories can still be told. The cultural and economic benefits of preservation can be enjoyed. But if the resource is destroyed, its place in history will eventually be lost. Its value as a trigger for economic development and community revitalization will have been squandered. We're interested in community revitalization and economic development by leveraging what we already have." So I have five things I'd like to basically walk through. A quick look at our context, what the assets are, our actual vision statement, what we see as the big opportunity here, and the benefits. As background context, this goes back originally to the early 50s, when the Harwich Historical Society was started in 53. About 10 years later, in New York City, Penn Station was brought down. And it was a huge hue and cry about the need, the need for preservation. We probably saw that impacted really here in Harwich that came home with the bringing down of the Harwich Exchange Building in '64. In '84, the New York Times had a feature article about the state of distress. And a number of people in Harwich created, what you'll see here, that little medallion, the Society for the Preservation of the Historic Harwiches. That was the first iteration. And in '85, there was an effort to bring about a Harwich Historic District. That created enough pressure here in town Board of Selectmen to create a historic inventory, commissioning Deirdre Brotherson to come in. And in 1993, Bill Galvin wrote a piece about the need for the town to develop four historic districts that could qualify. My dad, as you may know, was a cartoonist. And his idea, he had some pretty funny things. But one of the things he wanted to do was present this as like, you know, instead of the weeping Mohican for the environmental, there was actually a historical thing, which would be the weeping captain in a little-
You should point out that Bill Galvin's still using the same technology to do his story.
That's correct. Amen.
Some things don't change.
So I will submit this document to you all, so I'm not going to read through the whole thing. But here's what we have. We've got 24 structures in this row that we've all seen. There are of 38. 24 of these meet all four qualifications for placement on the National Register. This is a really pretty spectacular achievement. The density and compression of all these buildings in the same location. The other thing that's amazing is the variety of styles of American architecture, from the 1750s halfhouses down through Greek Revival, Italianate villas, Second Empire villas, stick style, shingle style, and bungalows. Every single major style of American domestic architecture is right here. It's like a museum. I mean, there's really nothing like it on the Cape. Even 6A. 6A, you have to go around the full length. You have to do about six or eight miles. This is in six tenths of a mile. So we think that, you know, we're all coming to this conclusion that there's something that can actually be done to, you know, take advantage of what we have, that no new construction, unless paraff, can surpass the value of even severely compromised historic structures. Each loss is permanent. And we have a unique and precious heritage here that's worthy of our best efforts. Not because of some antiquarian curiosity, but because we have solid economic and social objectives here. Again, we've already seen this, I won't go on. And what we see here, and what we believe, and what the consensus in our group is, is that this vision of circa 1900, which was a reflection about the benefits of our kind of colonial past, has all the ingredients that we would like to restore. The scale, the gentle doming of the road surface, the use of these like grassy aprons, the separate walk areas, all of this stuff. And we've thankfully been able to connect with this vision with, you know, visually in terms of what can be done with the people at VHB. Our idea is that this infrastructure already exists. It's got incredible history, incredible natural beauty. And the precedents for using these historically, you know, informed design and planning rules are all over the place. We don't really need to look elsewhere for solutions. It's already in the fabric of our town. What we really want to do is breathe, have your support. And guess what? I'm not asking for money. I don't want anything other than the support that you think that the people that are already here who want to move ahead, we'd like your support. And we've already had it. Here, when the walkthrough back last September, in October, we had a brainstorming session with VHB in this room. Then they went crazy with all the material that we have online. They showed us how we can articulate these road surfaces the way they're done here in Manchester, and the way we can bring appropriate street lighting, the way we've seen also out in, I think it's High School Road Extension up on, in Hyannis. These are all fixtures, features that we can control, design, and use to restore what we really want to have best. We think that the big opportunity here is that we can get qualification through districting for national recognition and attention, qualification for grants, tax credits, energy credits, targeted loans, private grant support, all the rest of it. And we believe that this is ultimately the way to go. We do have no objection whatsoever, whatsoever, to affordable housing. We'd just like them to step up and, you know, play with the spirit of the existing community as we already have it here. So when we got going here, we put together, our initial effort was to put together that drone footage that I think you've seen. And we used that to appeal to the greatest amount of talent that we could find. And our, we, I reached out to Professor Plato Zibber, who is one of the most accomplished people in the business of community revitalization. She's done over 200 projects globally that work in this. She's founded two architecture firms. She's the dean, or was the dean of the School of Architecture at University of Miami, trustee at Princeton, where she got her Bachelor of Architecture. And she sent me directly to the following schools: Harvard, Roger Williams, Savannah, the SCAD, Notre Dame, College of Charleston, College of the New Urbanism, and University of Hartford. We have about 18 people that stepped up within probably a day and a half of sending the email out. And they did this because we've taken initiative. We've taken it on ourselves to create social media, where we have Captain's Row, which is really right about 28, and Historic West Harwich, which is all the people that want to join Captain's Row, but they're not on it. And I think our reach is pretty spectacular. We've got a community that goes way beyond just these 24 houses. We have 18,000, almost 19,000 people have seen our drone footage since January 26. And on Sunday afternoon, I put out this little piece about, that ran in the Cape Cotter, I believe. And we had 710 views on that Facebook page in less than 24 hours. People from nine countries and 11 languages read what we have to write. And active as of today, thanks to another volunteer initiative, we now have a live website and a GoFundMe page. We're looking to raise our own money. We're looking to raise so we can get the professional legal counsel that we need to establish this, and also to make sure that we can fund the competition. We've got, as Lou has already said, we've submitted our historic district papers. And again, we're looking for these benefits. 30% increase in property values, which is going to mean a significant increase, increase in tax revenues. We're looking for the ability of homeowners here to get to qualify for up to 100 grand in state, federal historical tax credits, including a 20% income tax credit. We're also looking for state credits for up to 50,000, federal energy investment credits, private foundations, including the 1772 Foundation in Kinsman, as well as tax, you know, as well as what we're going to ultimately have here as a revitalized, beautiful, safe village. Professor Zibber, after she saw the drone footage, said, "We're looking at the quality and variety and natural beauty of, as a destination attraction, of the caliber of Manchester, Vermont, Nantucket, or Stonington, Connecticut." I think we'd be foolish not to see, leverage what we have and really work hard to not invest anything that's going to destroy the fabric of what we have. So again, all we are looking for is support for our vision. Help our efforts to uplift the community within the context of this vision. That is, don't destroy anymore. First, do no harm. Take a Hippocratic approach to this very precious, unusual assets, collection of assets. And then measure the success of how we work in terms of our own vision. That's how we can help. We would like to have your help. So I don't know if that's the time, but I thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Okay. Next, we asked the police chief to come in and talk to us. I will say on Saturday, we had an all-day session with the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen. And I'm not pointing at West Harwich, but we were sort of, I think I was stunned to learn that we actually have had some unfortunate incidents in this town where there are fatalities associated with some substance abuse and, you know, that type of thing. And chief, as I said then, little old Harwich, we had same problems everybody else does. They're just maybe not as magnified.
Correct.
But they're all there. They're all there. So chief, we particularly, maybe in general, you can talk about, you know, the crime situation or whatever, the thing you're, you know, what your officers face every day out in the street. But then also focus on the West Harwich specific area, if there are any things out there to be focused on.
Sure. Well, as you, most of you know, I imagine, I'm the new guy, right? I've been here six months, so I obviously have to admit that I cannot draw on some tremendous historical perspective of West Harwich, you know, because I haven't been here. So what do I do about that? And I came up with a three-step process in order to focus on, on the issue here tonight. And one is, I asked my staff some pointed questions about West Harwich. And then I asked to see the statistics. And then I delegated. So I identified one or two individuals to bring with me who have been here all along and are willing to answer the questions, whether they want to or not. That is Lieutenant Kevin Consonine, who was our current operations lieutenant. So he manages all the, the entire patrol function. Many of you may know him. He's very deeply involved in contact with the community and community policing, which is, I'm also a big fan of. And Detective Sergeant Robert Brackett, who runs our entire detective division, also manages all of the cases and investigations conducted by the Harwich Police Department. So I have those gentlemen here with me. I can tell you the results of the pointed questions regarding West Harwich. You know, because I simply wanted to be educated too. I, first of all, I haven't, I haven't heard a huge outcry of any major issues that the police department wasn't aware of. So that being said, no major issues. What's the, what's the status of the situation in West Harwich? Well, from the responses I got from my staff, pretty much the same as everywhere else. Depending, you know, you're going to have, you're going to have, you know, B and Es. You're going to have some violent crime. You're going to have drug issues. But it's pretty much from what they were telling me, it sounded like it was spread out. And so, okay, so what do the stats indicate? So they ran three years, the most recent three years, full three years. And West Harwich came in third out of the seven villages for all reportable crimes. Okay, that's just crimes. Now, I know, believe me, I know, of 28, 29 years in the business, numbers do not tell everything. But they tell you something. So that in conjunction with the answers that I got to my pointed questions about what's going on out in West Harwich, do we have issues? Do we not have issues? It, it came in pretty much in the, in the area where we felt it was going to come in. I think top was, was East Harwich, followed by Harwich Port, and then West Harwich, as far as numbers go, over the last three years. Okay, so, and, and the other areas are, are smaller. So, you know, it fell just about where we expected. So that's about it as far as, you know, obviously, I have the resources here to entertain any pointed questions that may arise as far as public safety issues. The only other thing that found its way onto my desk was that there was a, a traffic issue out there at an intersection hall in Division. I believe that's in the, roughly in the same vicinity. And there has been a study done on that. I saw the Dennis report because their traffic people were involved in it too, because it's Division Street. Other than that, that's pretty much my report, Mr. Chairman. Unless there's some, some questions, then I will have my, my officers field them. Or if I can field it, obviously, I will.
Do you have an answer for the rooster?
That's going to be addressed. That is, it's going to be addressed. So yes, I do.
Well, you know, that's what most people complain to us about, the rooster. So I mean, and there's probably a few in town.
We are nothing if not responsive, so it is going to be addressed when the complaints come in.
I understand that. Okay, thank you. Thank you, chief. All right. All right, so that's the presentations. So now I'm going to open it up to, the questions are- So now I'm going to open it up to questions or anybody want to bring up any topics. So my first question is, sounds great. Everybody's getting along, right? That's for the rooster. There you go. So.
I opted to take the rooster.
Did it work out, Leo?
I don't know. I told him I was going to eat it. They won't give it to me. I do have a question, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate. The presentation that we just saw, and I apologize, I do not have a copy of the proposed warrant in front of me. But can you explain to me exactly what the Captain's Row is asking for from the town at town meeting?
I don't think Captain's Row is asking for anything at town meeting.
Okay. What are they asking for today in their presentation then? I mean, this is not a, is this a proposed zoning overlay amendment? To make this a overlaid historic district?
That has, I'll defer to Duncan.
We were asked to provide a statement about the vision of a, and status of our historic districting process. That's all.
So is it, is it your group's intentions, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair? Is it your group's intentions to bring forward a zoning amendment, which would in fact create a overlay historic district in that area?
No, what we're trying to do is do a architectural competition to help create visualization studies that would steer the conversation right now for the Route 28 work that we're looking at. Of course, there is an interest in a historic district. We don't know what the status or the legalities or, you know, so it's all part of that. But what we're looking at is to make sure that we put a stake in the ground about the, that we raise public awareness about the fragility of the historic fabric of West Harwich.
And to my understanding, and again, Mr. Chair, I apologize, I do not have a copy of the draft warrant, but I'm going to try to get one as soon as possible. You have nothing on, your group does not have a warrant pending, an article pending?
Historic district?
Yes.
A district.
Not that I know of.
Okay. No, I'm just asking, because it seemed like that's what the presentation was about. Someone just knew he walked in.
What Duncan represents, I think, is a group in that area that's very concerned and interested in preserving the character of the neighborhood. Whether you call it, you know, a district or not, you know, I haven't seen a proposal come forward yet that says, okay, we want to create like we have in Harwich Center.
The only other question I have, and it's real brief, that in the presentation, there was a mention that property taxes were going to be increased by 30%. Is that just in that historic district or is that across townwide? Property values, I mean. Is that, again, is that the values in that area? Are you projecting that townwide?
If you have an historic district, make them walk.
Yeah, make them walk. That's good.
Make them walk.
Make them walk.
It's a proven fact that if you have a historic district that's maintained, that property values do increase by 30% because of the historic district. Therefore, within the district, which is outlined in what we proposed as a historic district amass, historic, which is the 20, Route 28, from Dennisport to the Herring River, covering both sides of the street. In that specific area, the town would see an increase in taxes if it would maintain the same criteria as the rest of the country. The opposite is also there, Leo, which is if we don't do anything, we could just as well see another 30% decrease. That's just life.
Okay. Thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate it. Thanks for the time.
Thanks. And take care of that rooster, will you?
They won't give it to me.
That's cruel.
Hi, Tom Peterson, Treasurer of Hetch. I'm good. How are you guys?
Great.
Thank you. Mr. Urbano, one question, two questions. Number one is, as you build these boats, which I admire your ability to craft those, and you're going to put them in the Herring River, who are you going to leapfrog? Who's on the list for, for moorings? Because we have a 10- or 12-year wait for moorings. I don't think people are going to be too happy to be leapfrogged to put the historic boats in ahead of their standing that they've had for years.
I'm glad you asked that question. We won't leapfrog anyone. I think the proposal we turned into CPC was that we would work in conjunction with someone that already had news there, and they would be leased off. We're not going to surpass anyone. But I do have a question of you.
Okay.
You are a Realtor?
Yep.
Tell me something. What is the value of a property that is going to be demolished?
Pretty subjective question.
It's not subjective whatsoever.
If we're going to demolish the White House, if we're going to demolish the White House, it's worth hundreds of millions.
Let's talk about the Chase House in general.
Okay. It's been on for $389.9. When the phone doesn't ring, I know it's you.
Excuse me. The question was, and if I have to answer it for you, I will. We have a house that is scheduled for demolition, which is the Chase House.
No, it is not scheduled for demolition, first of all. No, it is not.
I don't know anybody who's filed, has there been a demolition?
There has been a demolition delay asked for through the historic commission.
Right. But it has not, it has not been scheduled for demolition, so don't make a false statement, please.
I don't know if that's a false statement. It is scheduled for demolition. And let's assume that a house is going to be.
Time out, Lou. Wait a minute. Let me get this clear. Just so you know, I don't know whether Richard or Mr. Peterson knows the answer. Has there been, on that property, has there been a permit applied for?
Yes, there has, and there's been a one-year delay.
How long ago? Just wait a second.
But it is not scheduled for demolition.
But how long ago is the permit filed?
Susan?
I'm sorry. No permit has been filed for demo. An intended demo was filed. That expired in November.
Okay.
Oh, the one we just ripped? No, it isn't. 2.5.
Okay. So that expired. So there's no.
Delay.
The delay has been expired and no permit has been pulled. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So in general, I still ask the question, in general, Peter?
I understand. So the question he's asking is, I'll just ask the question. For that property, if it were to be demolished, what's the value of the property? I guess is the question. So I'm guessing it's the land it's on, but.
It would be, it would be the value of the land and the cost to demolish. Okay. We've been asking $389 for the property. No takers, no historic district people coming to me, calling me. We're very willing, as Susan pointed out, as Ladara pointed out earlier, very willing to sell it for way under half that amount. Still, they don't come to us. We're very willing to sell it for half, less than half that money. So if they're so interested in preserving it, why don't they call me? Because we'll make a great deal for them.
That's a fair point. That's a fair point. So I'm just throwing this out there. So for something, something in a $200,000 neighborhood.
I would say less than $200,000. Make it even easier for them to call.
Okay. But if someone, anyone came to you and said, "I want to preserve that structure."
RFP is the answer.
"Will you sell it to me? Will you sell it to me at some price?" Then you would entertain that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we're talking the whole property?
We're not talking the property that they want to use in the back, that Habitat wants to build some affordable housing. So if the guise here is that you only want it for the cheap price, but you want the whole acre and a half, then I guess we're not going to ever have a meeting of the minds.
Okay. So let me just be clear. So what you would then be selling would be that building.
Building on a reasonable 12, 10, 12,000 square foot lot, which is more than enough to preserve it as a historic building. They don't need an acre and a half. And the win-win-win that Ladara talked about is preservation of the Chase House, the affordable housing in the back. I mean, I just don't understand why, if you want to, if you want the Chase building to be preserved in history as, as the captain's house that it is, why do you need an acre and a half? What's wrong with 12,000 feet? I don't understand that.
Let me finish up the story. I don't know.
Okay, Peter. I.
I'm getting a little confused. Is the Chase building and what's the other building called?
The little duplex next to it, which has no historical value.
Is it historic?
No, not at all.
Okay. I'm just asking.
That's where the road to Bob Murray Way will go into the new project.
What year was that built?
1950.
Okay. So is the intent there that that would be torn down?
It would be, if we need to tear it down to put in the road leading to the Habitat homes, then we'll tear it down. If we don't, if we can fit it on the west side of that building and we can put the road in to the Habitat properties, then nothing will be torn down.
Okay. Do we, do we know about, I mean, we must know how big the road's going to be.
Habitat, well, it's going to be whatever the road, whatever the town requires for a taking, plus drainage and everything else that's required for a turnaround for fire trucks. So it's going to be built according to specs. It'll be a 40B project. The road will be according to town specs.
How much, can I, I'm just asking a question. How much land is there available from, from the west side of that building to the lot line, I guess?
To the lot line of the duplex?
Going west. Where you put the road in?
Well, it's.
Is it 10 feet? Is it 20 feet? Is it, I don't know.
Oh, no. It's, it may not be enough to put in drainage and everything that's required, berms and everything that's required. So therefore, we're fully prepared to raise the duplex if we have to to gain access to the Habitat subdivision. We're very willing to do that.
Would that, would that property, that one, stay with, go with Habitat?
No.
Okay.
No. Hetch will retain ownership of the Chase property and the duplex. We'll sell the back portion, that circle you saw earlier tonight.
And you're going to give them an easement to get through the?
No, they don't need an easement. They're going to put a road into that circular property.
Okay. But whose land is the road on? Is that on your land?
It's going to be Habitat's road.
Okay. But it's crossing your land, isn't it?
Well, we're going to, you want to.
I'm just trying to understand.
We're going to isolate that property under the 40B.
All right. So you're going to, you're going to change the lot?
Yes. Right.
On the 40B, you're going to change the lot so you can put the road in?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. And so you'll end up with some piece of land?
We'll end up with the Chase property. Ready, willing, and able to sell for less than $200,000. We'll have the duplex. If it doesn't get raised, it'll be sold for about the same price, for about the same lot size.
And if it gets.
And if it gets raised, we'll end up with a building lot, a single-family home building lot, which in my view, as a Realtor, is worth the same amount of money as it is with a house on it, because the house needs a ton of work.
Okay. It wouldn't go with the Chase property.
No, not at all.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what the plan is.
Yes. Okay. I understand. Thank you, Peter. And my only other question was, a long time ago, Bob Murray and Hetch looked into the West Harwich Schoolhouse building. And my question to Mr. Urbano is, have you contemplated doing a 21E on that property? Do you have any anticipation of what is underneath the ground there?
We did speak to our health department here and, what was her name? Paula Champagne. And she assured us there would not be an issue.
Because no one's living there.
Pardon? No one's living there. That's right. So Peter.
Excuse me, one second. Before you ask for town funds, you're sure that that property, as you, as you go down, dig under that property, is pristine? It is not polluted in any way? Because Hetch backed away from a project on that very property when it was found that it's totally polluted under that building.
Right. And I think the difference is, I read those reports. I think the difference is that we are not putting in housing. That was the problem for that.
Okay. So only people visiting the town will be subjected to the pollution under that property?
Well, the other, the other side of it, Tom, is quite frankly, this board has made a conscious decision not to sell the property, to keep the property under town ownership. So we're not selling it.
So we're extending the liability to the town for visitors who claim to be harmed by pollution under that building?
Well, just like people parking the parking lot, I guess, would do the same thing.
Okay. So town council's ready to accept that liability?
I don't know.
I think, I don't know, you know? I think we need to find out. I just know what we found out and chose not to proceed.
Do we have the guidelines for where that plume is? And does that plume also extend other, under other houses in the area? Does it also extend perhaps under the Chase House and so forth?
It comes from Dennisport.
Do we want, yeah. So we, we really want to be careful in.
Okay. But I think the intent here is to try and figure out how this whole thing can come together and coexist, okay? Without, you know, let's see. Who has other questions? What? And by the way, Lou, I don't, I don't want you to sit here the whole time. Because I want people to be able to get up and say what they're going to say. So. Anne?
Hi. I have a question about the whole win-win-win-win thing. I don't understand. It hasn't been made clear to me yet. If the Chase House is cut off from its surrounding land, and I don't understand the 12,000 square feet parcel, I don't know. As you pointed out, how many feet is it going to be from this prospective road if the duplex next door has to be, you know, demolition for the road? And again, who owns the road? But to have that old house just on a postage stamp of the actual ground it's on, I don't get the desirability. It's been mentioned, oh, well, we'll sell it for, you know, a fraction of whatever it's worth. And, you know, some historical people will come in here and do something there. What? I mean, if there's, if that lot is so tiny, then where would there be parking for a historical building for people to come visit? Are they thinking of it being a resident, a residence? And if it's going to be a residence, who's going to want to live there? I mean, there's going to be a road servicing six houses right next door, coming and going all day, first thing in the morning, whenever these people go to work. I don't get the desirability. I don't get the win-win-win-win thing. Thank you.
Well, I would just say, Anne, in response to that, number one, I don't know who lives there today, but they park someplace. I don't think they park way in the back. I doubt. It's probably grass back there, I'm assuming. I don't, I have no idea. But I think the intent here is, at least with the historic people, is to keep these structures or bring them back to life, if you will. All right? Well, how do you do that unless somebody's going to couple with a ton of money to go do it? It's got to be individual homeowners and maybe have some assistance from folks. And you take, for instance, the, what's the bishop's terrace that's there? I mean, it's in terrible shape, you know? If you go look at that thing, it's, I mean, I don't know how that's going to come back unless somebody buys it and invests the money in it, you know, to bring it back, which is going to be a lot of money. So someone has to see an investment opportunity. There's no doubt about it. I mean, that's just like anybody would with their house. I mean, if they see that they get a house at a certain price and have to put so much into it, and it ends up looking like this and being like that, and they think that's a value, then I guess they'd do it, you know? I think we all make those decisions ourselves, you know, as individuals. And I think we're talking about keeping these properties in individual ownership, I assume. I'm guessing. Tom, how are you?
Good, Mr. Chair.
Not a bylaw topic.
I know. There's, there are many of me. I've been on the Board of Hetch for 15 years. So with that having been said, I'm not often accused of trying to force moderation onto a subject, but I'm going to give it a shot here. Everyone is, first of all, nothing is going to get settled tonight. I hope everybody in the room understands that because.
No, this is our chance, this is, this is, this board's chance, and probably you folks, dear from each other. And we're trying to understand everything that's going on out there. That's all.
Which is where I'm coming from. I, I think we need to step back a second. I can assure you, first of all, from the perspective of the Hetch Board, that we're trying to find a solution that brings the historic value of the area in alignment with the ability to do the housing. I mean, my point of view in this is, I'd love to save the captain's house, but frankly, I'd like to be able to have some rooms for the crew to live in, which is really what the affordable housing is. You need to, the folks in the room need to understand that there's two effective baselines for this. There are friendly 40Bs and there are hostile 40Bs. You could have a commercial company come in, provide us with 10% affordable housing. They would, they could utilize 40B. We wouldn't be having this discussion about how to save the house and what size the property is if they did that. Because they're not subject to the same demolition delay as under 40A in zoning. We're all trying to find a solution for a friendly 40B, for something where we can have a demonstrated affordable housing provider in Habitat, come up with something in conjunction with saving the corridor itself so that everybody gets something out of this. But the reality is, if it becomes a zero-sum equation, somebody's going to lose everything, which is, I don't think what the town is really looking for here. The idea is to save the historic inventory. This house has been altered in a number of different ways over its history. And all of it, it was nonhistoric. So somebody's going to have to adopt this house and give it some love. And it's going to have to be something financial. As far as I can remember, we still live in America and it's still an asset. And somebody, if they really don't want this to be demoed, needs to step up and buy it. We're trying to provide a solution to this that brings down the overall purchase price of this so that allows the restoration, at the same time as allowing some affordable people. if they really don't want this to be demoed, needs to step up and buy it. We're trying to provide a solution to this that brings down the overall purchase price of this, so that allows the restoration, at the same time as allowing some affordable people to live behind it. And I don't see them as mutually exclusive unless the parties make them mutually exclusive.
Well, and that's why you're all here tonight.
Sure. But I, I did want everybody to hear what 40B does, though, because 40B does not have us voluntarily going in front of the Historic Commission, which we did, as a matter of choice, because we wanted to be part of the community. We didn't want to just tear the house down. But 40B in its hostile version assuredly has that option.
I understand.
Well, I definitely want the proponents of the Historic Corridor to understand that. We're all trying to work towards something that's mutually advantageous.
Okay, so, so the question is, not to, I guess through you, does this have a Title V subject system?
No.
The existing house, Chase House?
Well, unless you, unless you wanna put the pipes in that part of town.
No, 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 but it has one, right? Title V?
Yeah.
So, for $200,000, somebody get a house with a Title V subject system on that lot, right?
Here.
Less, okay. I mean, no, seriously, no, I mean.
Tom's negotiating against himself.
How many bedrooms?
Yeah.
Tom, how many bedrooms? How many bedrooms?
We think real reasonable.
How many bedrooms, Tom? Huh? He's not gonna answer me. Tom, how many bedrooms? How many bedrooms in the house?
Five.
Five, how many baths? Let's run an ad in the paper. I mean, you know, you can solve this problem in 10 minutes. It's a good deal.
Your Realtor mind is on.
Oh, there you go, okay.
But the point I wanted to leave everybody.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
The point I wanted to leave everybody with is, there's a possibility of finding a point of convergence here where the project gets done, the house gets saved, and the district happens. As last I looked, we're also homeowners in that district, and you really want unanimity when you're applying for the historic district, too. Everybody wants to have something happen out of this that is a good and meritorious thing for the community. All we really wanna be able to do is engage in a dialogue that gets the whole thing done.
Okay, so what I'm hoping tonight is, after this meeting, you folks on the way out or whatever, start reaching across the, I'll call it the aisle, for lack of anything else, and get together, get together, whether you form a subcommittee, a group, whatever, and start talking about it, and figure it out, and hopefully you come back to us someday and say, hey, we wanna come in and tell you what a great plan.
Lou's shaking his head, yes. We'll talk outside.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joan McCarty.
How are you, Joan?
Can I just have one quick statement to make? I'm amazed.
Talk into the mic, please. You can raise it up. No, you can.
Little people working here. I'm amazed that somebody owns a piece of property, and somebody else comes in and says, no, you can't sell it. Don't sell it. You don't, you can't put that on the market. You can't split up your property. You can't, you can't. If somebody told me I couldn't sell my house because maybe they wanted to do something in the future, I'd have them walking down the street bow-legged. All of a sudden, it's like, you have to listen to me, and you have to let me tell you what to do with your property. That doesn't make sense to me at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Spitz?
Hi, I'm David Spitz. This absolutely should be a win-win situation. I won't add the third and fourth win, but here's a couple of things that need to be done, in my opinion. Liddar and I have discussed the site plan, and we haven't come to agreement on that yet. However, I believe the reason we need a site plan is that so the community can understand what is happening, and I suggest that be the case before you commit $300,000. I've done my own site planning, but, and I've even shown it to a couple of people, but I don't wanna bring it here, because that's not my job on this property. But from that, I'm firmly convinced that to get the road in, that the 1950s house cannot stay. I also feel that there is no need to devote the full acre and a half to be around the Chase property, but I also believe that 10,000 to 12,000 square feet is not enough. I think it's very easy to take a good, clear look at that and figure that out. My own answer is, it's about a half acre to give enough land to that house to make it be similar to other houses along the way. It would be nice to have the parties just agree with each other. That works sometimes, that doesn't. But where the town comes in is, we are suggesting giving money. Affordable Housing Fund is on the table now, but Community Preservation Act also should be discussed. $300,000 for affordable housing and nothing for historic preservation may not be the right combination for this site. It may be necessary to suggest some historic dollars for that front property. These are all things that I think need to be worked out between the parties and with the town's involvement. I've worked with the Affordable Housing Committee. We've looked at a number of sites. Of all the ones that the Affordable Housing Committee is now looking at, this is the best one, the back of this property that Habitat is looking at. I also think the goals of the historical on Route 28 are very worth supporting. I think right now, there's a 50% chance that under the proposal that's being brought to you, that that front property would go the Orleans route and would not be preserved for historic. I think with a little more analysis, and I know Hetch did a lot of work on seeing if that house could be saved, but I think with some further look at what could be done with that house, we would know better where that stands. Exactly what the town should get involved in and what the other party should be, I won't try to say tonight.
So, David, how would you suggest that gets done?
I would suggest, under the auspices of what you've just started, that some portion of the town be further involved in working with both sides and trying to sit around the table and get something done.
Such as the town planner?
Sure.
Well, no, I thought, I thought I heard you say, I thought I heard you say before that it, that it basically wasn't your purview to go make site plans and that type of thing. But I, I hope what I'm hearing is that you would have the willingness and enthusiasm to work with both sides here, or everybody, and try and work out something that makes sense for the, I'll just call it the site, even though it's two sites, three sites, whatever it is.
I have tried to do that, but the reason I'm getting up tonight is, I think there are still some unanswered questions, and I wanna make sure this board is aware of them. And then, I'm absolutely willing to work with.
Okay, no, we appreciate that. All right, so, all right, so I see some board hands go up, so Janelle?
I guess I'm a girl, sorry. So, Willow Street abuts it. Same question, right?
Same question.
So, when do we, when does Willow Street get involved? And do we have to hold off doing anything as a town until we figure out the whole, the deed with Willow Street?
My initial feeling is that Habitat's six or seven homes, what'd they say, four to six? I guess I was saying six to seven. But say, six homes, I think is about the right amount to put there right now. That can be done without Willow Street. I think also that way you have access just going to Route 28. You don't get into the issues of residential access in the back. And I think the Willow Street title issues are still a couple of years in the, in the making, if we really go through it right now. So, I would go ahead on the Route 28 and not Willow Street. That's my initial reading. But again, get people together and more things can be discussed.
Angela, is that your question?
Well, my comment was to check the documents from five, 10 years ago, when Willow Street was considered the way in, and there were two, two possibilities. One, using that for building lots, and the other one was to use it as a driveway or road. So, that exists someplace, because that was, and then that leaves Route 28 alone, basically.
That would be one of the possibilities.
Would it make sense for me to leave the room, come back in 10 minutes, and maybe you guys have this all figured out?
At least 20.
Yeah, Linda, did you have a question?
I was just gonna say that I think that the Willow Street issues have been existing for 15 years.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
So, I don't think those are gonna be solved anytime soon.
Just, Mr. Chair, I do wanna say, I appreciate, Dave, that, you know, we have met the different groups individually to see what we can do. And as you could see tonight, it's, it's not such an easy deal to get brokered. But certainly, anything we could do to try to facilitate that. And we did say openly that we would work with them on Willow Street if that made sense, because it does make sense.
So, you mean, we could buy that, that first house for $100,000?
You can.
You can.
They'll take your credit card right now.
It doesn't have enough of a limit on it.
His?
I'm over.
Oh, I bet it does.
Well, then, can we talk, Angela?
Just see the points he could get. Lou, I'm sorry, Lou.
Mr. Chair, thank you. First, I'd like to say, I agree with both Don Howe, is he still here? I'd be happy to sit with you, Don, and spend as much time as you'd like going over the issues. And I know you're not easy to work with. Neither am I. So, working together, I think maybe we could come to a solution. I do want to say, there is no opposition to affordable housing. As a matter of fact, we did try to bring forth a vision of turning the historical home into workforce affordable housing, which is not, was an option that would net basically the same amount of housing. And so, we did bring that forward. What we'd like to do is really preserve Captain's Row, and it's not a matter of preservation, Don. It's really a matter of revitalization in an area that needs it dramatically. And so, that's what our community is about.
And I don't think, go ahead, I don't think anybody disagrees with that.
And so, working with, Dave, the problem that we have, and, because I've been asked, I didn't wanna be the spokesman, I asked to step out, and unfortunately, I got the role. One of the things that we really would love to see is just, is a plan of some sort that says, here's what we're going to do, here's where the houses are gonna be, here's where the road's gonna be. And you know what? If, there's an appraisal on a property, you know, it would be nice to see some real figures that say, hey, that house has been appraised, and this is what it's worth, and this is what the town's gonna buy it for. It would be nice to actually have some documentation, so that we're not talking in terms of worst-case scenario at all times, in terms of our imagination.
Understand. I think it would be helpful, two or three people on this side, two or three people on this side with the town planner involved.
Sure.
Sit down and try and work some stuff through, and come back with what it might look like, that's all.
Be happy?
I think that needs to be done.
Again, publicly, I'm stating I'm more than happy.
Everybody needs to put the effort in to do it. I mean, it's worth doing, so.
I have Don's email. Don, you'll have an email tomorrow? You have mine.
Sally?
Good evening. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that in this vision that we're proposing, affordable housing was a considered and is a considered faction. So, I did a lot of work on trying to figure this out, and it seems to be the new way of doing things, of leveraging the historic, of the affordable housing economic development. And they, they come up with some great results. If you Google, if you don't, don't believe me, just Google historic and affordable housing, and you'll get all kinds of hits on it. And I think.
So, what you're telling me is, when people work together, the outcome's better?
Yes.
Is that right?
That is exactly right, that that, that we think there might be a way to save that house and put affordable units in it, that there, I'm sure with everybody's brain power, there's got to be many ideas of how to do that. And I think also, to stress the point that Duncan Berry has put forth this proposal in which these schools will come in, make a competition, and sort of point out and give us some visuals as to how this could be done in the historic fabric, so that we can all win from it.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we didn't quite understand the word competition, I don't know. You know, but we'll get back to that. Hello?
Good evening. Hi, my name is Darian Davis. I live on Willow Street in West Harwich. And for as long as my family has owned my home, which has been since the mid-'30s, I have always been under the impression that the land that comes through to Willow Street had an unclear title. But I understand, or maybe I misunderstood tonight, did the Town of Harwich buy it?
Chris, what's the status?
Or did you, could you take it by eminent domain? Because I was under the impression.
There's a section of it that I believe is, the town owns a portion of it.
I believe that, yes, I believe that that was taken either by eminent domain, or I believe it was by eminent domain or tax title. I'm not sure which. Hopefully, somebody here might know that.
Or do you know when that happened?
At least 15 years ago, through a town, 2001, so 15 years ago.
Okay.
It was a town meeting article. So, town meeting did pass this, and the town does own that property. Then it was determined that there were some, again, there were these, these lot lines where someone has their shed half on town property now. These things have existed for at least 15 years, or for the 15 years. Plus, there seems to be some issues with, did, did all the descendants get notified that this eminent domain was gonna happen? So, there's, there's some, there's been some extensive work done, but nothing has been done since. And I know that the Housing Committee, I know I've, I've pushed for this, that one way or another, this has gotta get resolved. And because it isn't going to be easy to resolve, it's not just file some form over at the registry, and everything's great. It's gonna be some pretty extensive work.
Well, one of my neighbors, who unfortunately has since now deceased, her name was Betty Bagshaw, but she did years and years of research into this property, because she would abut where the potential road would come onto Willow Street, as would one of my other neighbors. And we've looked at potential lot lines, it would come five feet from their outdoor shower. So, to hear that the gentleman said that possibly you wouldn't need the access road onto Willow Street would be very much encouraging for me, because the traffic is horrendous in the summer. I can't tell you how many times I myself have called the Police Department to say, you need to get someone down here. People go in 60, 65 on the street. We found syringes on the side of the road. It's just, it's parallel to Route 28, it's just a pass-through. So, to find out that there's a possibility that there would not be that access road coming onto Willow Street would be a great relief for me.
Well, again, it's, it's going to be some, a couple of years' worth of work to get all these issues resolved. So, I don't think it's gonna happen anytime soon, if at all.
Oh, of course. And I understand that. I went to the, one of the meetings that was at the Police Department a couple of weeks ago, and they were talking that basically it was probably four to five years out. But I don't want it to be the beginning of year four, and all of a sudden, it's getting everyone's attention. So.
Well, the good news is it got your attention tonight. You came out.
It did, it did. I work for another town, so I feel like I'm still working, but.
Well, it's okay, but you, you know, you know what's, you have a sense of what's going on in the area, so that's great.
Oh, definitely.
That's great. Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening.
Um, wait, I'm sorry, Angela?
Can I just ask a question? I think it's important that next meeting or the meeting after that, you, at this meeting, report exactly what happened with those lots, so that people know how that whole thing started, because otherwise, I think there are a lot of misconceptions.
Well, the best thing to do is get Labor Council, I mean, not Labor, Real Estate Council here.
What I believe is that there were some lots that the town owned, however they owned it, and there are lots that people owned. But when you go look at them, people, the lines are not with the activity.
There's a whole bunch of issues.
So, I think we need to let everybody know what the issues are exactly.
Okay, perfect.
If I, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just, I think it makes sense that, what we started down this process of having the, the former town attorney look at it, he's retired. So, he started it, and then he didn't, he didn't finish it. So, we are in the process of turning it over to the new attorney, and we're trying, Coleman Page, we're trying to get all the material for them, so they understand the framework of the issue. And then, we can look at the eminent domain, we can look at the encroachment, and find out what is the plan going forward to clean it up.
I just think, I think the residents, I think the residents need to know exactly what the situation is.
And actually, and list down all the issues, because it is a ton of them.
Okay. Yeah, we know Michael, we know. No, we understand. Michael's backed off a lot from what he's doing, so. That's the starting point. Brooke?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. Brooke Williams, West Harwich. I have some questions and also follow-up comments, and I've been raising some of these for a while. I think the key point that the Board of Selectmen, and obviously, you know, your responsibility is review, and it's wonderful you're allowing the public to come in. But as we're thinking of this, on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund part with the, the Hetch and the Habitat for Humanity, I think we have to consider, the lady here mentioned about buying something or selling something, but the question, and why you're involved and why we're all discussing is, this is with public funds, it's public money, Town of Harwich. And we don't have unlimited funding. And in fact, Mr. Clark mentioned, and I think it's very important, the Treasury has noted, we have 219,000. And in fact, some of the additional money, up to 300, we don't have. It hasn't been produced yet. We're fortunate in the Town of Harwich, and I think Mr. Howe was involved in the past planning, where we have a cell tower in East Harwich, which is one of the sources that we can use to generate. And it's very, a far-sighted thing about that. But as we're thinking about the 300,000, I think then the next question is, where is the overall plan? I attended the CBC hearings, and one of the questions I was thinking about there was, there is only one proposal, but where is all the other proposals? So, we've been talking about, Mr. Murray. And I think the, the question has to come, where you're asking for the 100%, and even into the future of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It means there are no other issues, this is 2.5 acres, but in the rest of the Town of Harwich, in the seven villages, that are not important. And I think the first issue, which I raised in November 2nd, in my comment to Mr. McCready at the Housing Authority, was the town's housing production plan. And that production plan, which was approved by the Selectmen in 2009, and then was certified in the state in 2010, one of the funds that was used to create that plan was the Affordable Housing Trust. And so, essentially, that element, which And so essentially, that element, which has expired the certification, we don't have a housing production plan. And why that's so important is there are a lot of issues, not only in West Harwich, housing issues, but in all the villages, and we really don't have a plan. We have something that the certification has expired, the time period has gone by, some of the things, it mentions the, the West Harwich Hatch Project, those have, you know, been proposed and haven't gone forward. Now, there've been successes, I was involved with the Thankful Chase Project, that was completed on time, and that's gone forward. But we really need to understand the importance of keeping up to date, and I know some of the members of the Board of Selectmen are considering running for reelection, or may have put in papers. And do you really want to say, if we, we spend all this money, that we don't have a housing production plan, and we're not in favor of creating a new one, which is the requirement by the state? And so I think the first question is, what is, what is, has there been more discussion since I raised this point in November 2nd in regard to creating a new housing production plan?
Answer is no.
Okay.
Okay.
The second.
The other answer, I believe, is the, the cell tower generates, if I remember, about $4,000 a month? Is that the number? Huh? I think it's four, but maybe I'm wrong.
I believe it's 39,000 a year, I think that's what it is. So essentially, yes. So the other point I raised in November 2nd was Pine Oaks 1 and 2. And in the plan that certified, certification has expired, one of the key points was provision or preservation of affordability. And there, there are Pine Oaks 1, I believe is 60, and Pine Oaks 2 is 38 units. And I, you know, trying to find out some of the background of it, it's tremendous history involving people from the first congregational church, some of the folks around are still involved with that. And so the question then was, you know, what are the issues there? And in fact, have we, has that been resolved, or, you know, is that an ongoing kind of thing? Oh, I should also say, in terms of the housing production plan, the other question I was wondering about, would the town be informed of that? So as an individual, I contacted DHCD, and they indicated that they don't inform the town, it's voluntary. So it's not Mr. Clark or, or Mr. Spitz that have missed on that. It's, it's up to the towns, the committees.
Understand.
They're supposed to be keeping up on these things, okay? And so Pine Oaks 1 and 2, essentially, I contacted the Commission, Cape Cod Commission, and they do an excellent job in terms of looking at things from the housing from a county standpoint, Mr. Kukounis is there, so give them the tremendous importance on housing. You have nothing to do with the Cape Cod? All right, well, I'm not going to comment on that, but in any case.
He has everything to do with it.
Right, in any case, in any case on that, so they, they indicated, in most cases, nonprofits typically try not to lose housing units. In other words, this is the general approach. But they mentioned, and I found it independently, of the CDAC expiring use inventory, the latest one is July 2015. And that indicates that 38 of the units in Pine Oaks 2 may be up for expiring. And then there's also three units that are developed by a private developer at some point. So the, the point is, where is that in terms of Pine Oaks 1 and 2? So I talked as an individual to one of the board members, he referred me to the management company that runs on that. And quite frankly, at this point, they're still working on developing a plan, which I think is a vitally important thing. And I think what the town should be doing is developing a new housing production plan. One of the key aspects is working with that organization to make sure that all those units, we retain that affordability. And so I don't know, you know, where that stands in terms of without having a plan, but this is why I believe the housing production plan is such a vital thing. And in terms of the win-win, I think the first aspect I would question of the win-win, if we delay the housing production plan, I don't think that's a win for the entire community, I think that's a loss. I think if we delay on Pine Oaks 1 and 2, and working with these good people who are providing this housing, and making sure we have a plan in place, I don't think that's a win, to take 100% of this money for this particularly.
Yeah, I think the folks that talk on win-win, when we're talking about this specific area.
But we have to think in context.
I understand, I understand, I appreciate it.
Of a request for 100% of these funds.
Understand. Your point's well taken.
The other element I would point out, and I think we have to go through a little bit of the history, because what was mentioned before was it started in 2008, and it was originally a rental project. And that was incorrect, and Mr. Patterson, Peterson is here, I would point out, it was actually 2007, it was a condominium project, and it wasn't the voters of Harwich, it was the market that went down. I would point out that the voters of Harwich, two years before, in 2005, looked at either rental, ownership, or a mix in Thankful Chase, and that moved forward. So Mr. Murray was tireless in his efforts, I think that, that's, there's no question about that. In 2008, he had a vision, again, what was Mr. Murray's vision, to look at both parcels and Willow. And in fact, Mr. Murray was the proponent in 2001 of Willow. But in other words, there was a vision not to set aside one aspect, but looked at the whole thing. And I think a vital aspect, I would also say, and just slight difference from what the Planning Chair mentioned earlier, is I think you begin by working with the residents. And as we're thinking of the residents, I think what's not being mentioned here, and there was discussion by Hetch and Habitat of people, there are people living in the units that we're talking about right now, okay? And Mr. Peterson mentioned in his, in the Housing Authority discussion, that in fact, there are three units. I believe, I thought, looking at the assessor's records, there's only two, but you indicated at that meeting that there are three units, is that correct, sir?
In which one?
In the Chase House. 97. There are three units.
You collect three rents.
Okay, he's got three rents coming in, so they're, they're up to three. Now, the lady who's behind me indicated now it's going back to two, I don't know. But, but keep in mind a couple of things about that. What was mentioned earlier, there was a, there was a notice of intent applied for. What this means is it says, the owner intends to demolish, okay? This is the notice of intent. Now, there is no schedule when that's going to happen, but that's still, that's still sitting there.
Okay, we weren't, okay, we weren't through that.
Okay.
And I'm gonna, I'm pretty soon gonna cut you off and let you come back after the other people behind you get their chance to speak.
All right, very good. And, and so I think what I, my point is a key point on this is a precedent, because we've been hearing about, you know, unfriendly 40Bs. But when you have three, and then two more units aside from that, and we've been talking, some people say, well, we'll demolish that, there are Harwich residents. Now, what has been referred to in the demolition delay, there are tenants that will, but there's still Harwich residents. And so I think the notion that, in other words, somehow, this is something that we should not do more consideration in planning for, I think is questionable. And so I would ask, rather than giving 100% of the housing affordability, one, have either a licensed, registered architect or a professional engineer, look at options for Thankful Chase, some small amount for that, and then continue working with the neighbors.
Thankful Chase.
Options for continuing it, yes, for continuing use.
For Thankful Chase.
No, no, I'm sorry, excuse me, I misspoke, for the Chase House on 28, not Thankful Chase, whatever.
And by the way, there is no request at the moment before the Board of Selectmen, so.
For the 300,000?
I haven't, I haven't received one.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm just trying to provide.
Doesn't mean one isn't coming tomorrow morning, but I have not received one.
Right.
There is a process, excuse me, there is a process that the town administrator explained about that money beforehand, we're going to follow that process.
Right. Because I think if we understand how vital and important these funds are with respect to this lady here, that in other words, the, all the seven villages, there are issues in each village.
Understand.
And we have to address it.
All right, I'm gonna cut you off and let the people behind you speak, you can come back and, you can come back?
One last?
No, not one last, you sit down, please, let the rest of the people speak, and then you can come back. So there, how are you?
Thank you, I'm doing great.
That's all right, I had to cut people off, but not you at the moment.
I can be brief again, I did 10 minutes before. I want to thank this board, and also thank the Housing Authority and the Housing Committee for the time that they've put into this project and the process. I, you know, Habitat, I shouldn't say I, we do this throughout the 15 towns of the Cape, and I think it is a real value to the community to have this discussion before a project is determined. This is exactly what the community process is about. We work in partnership with our communities, and I think there was some allusions previously to a non-friendly 40B developer that just goes in, that is not what we do. We want to be a welcomed project, which is why we enjoy these processes and think they're helpful. Our piece is that we need to know there is a certain level of community support before we go to the next step with planning and spending funds. We are a risk-averse nonprofit, we are also a nonprofit that works on a skinny budget. We sell houses for $126,000. That is tough. We can't be like a for-profit developer and spend $50,000 and come in with a presentation. So we want to partner with you. We, our understanding, actually, just to step back a little bit, is that this was a request for $30,000? 300, thank you. Losing a zero there. Okay.
It's not tonight, because it didn't follow the right channels, quite frankly.
I believe that what originally, I mean, we're happy to do what the town wants, but what we thought happened was we met with the town administrator, the assistant town administrator, the town planner, and asked about the housing fund, and were given advice, and we went through the Housing Committee and the Housing Authority, and received those votes, and asked to be on the agenda. And if we need to do something different, we are happy to do that. But that was our understanding from communication, and what it sounded like was that there was some learning as we went, and we were told afterwards that we'd be okay now? I mean, I.
Yeah, just, at least through you, Mr. Chairman, I was invited to a meeting to discuss concepts, and that's exactly what we did, and we laid out, and then, you know, you folks went and kind of ran with the concept. But under the formal policy, a proposal has to be submitted, or a letter of intent has to be submitted to the board, and that hasn't, that formal process has not been utilized yet. So we, we can meet and discuss.
Okay, we, we believed we did that, but that is fine. What we would like to do, and I don't know if with process that this can be done, I think it might be helpful at this point, is we are happy hearing this information. If there is general support for this project, we were about to amend our request, which is where I dropped my zero to 35,000 for planning, and use those funds, you know, in cooperation, again, with the town, use those affordable housing funds to come back with the information that has been requested.
Okay, so my, my suggestion there is follow the process, it's a simple process, with that amended whatever you're looking for, outline it, and bring it back to us, we'll put it on the agenda.
As we have already been, great, thank you.
Mr. Waystack.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Board, Mr. Clark.
Do you got a phone book with you?
I have, the assessor's records. And, and, you know, I just, I heard some discussions earlier about sizes of lots for historical properties, Mr., the town planner spoke about what is an appropriate size. And if you drive through Harwich Port, and you see the Camelot House, historic property that was renovated in the last few years, beautiful property, did a wonderful job, it's a boutique now B&amp;B, rents at $12,000 a week, magnificent job. That sits on much less than quarter of an acre of land, and 12,000 square feet is a little over a quarter of acre. And if you drive down Bank Street, Lower Bank, below Lower County, I mean, below 28, and if you drive up Bank Street, north of Route 28, you'll see some beautifully historic homes, old captain's homes, for instance. And many of those sit on quarter acre to a third acre of land. Now, the concepts, the win-win, Captain's Row was a great idea, you know, to bring value back. I'm a Realtor, and I've seen some of the, the values be devalued in, in West Harwich. But one of the best things you can do for a neighborhood is to create year-round occupied properties. And having a project like Habitat where you have people in this community, you know, our neighbors, the folks who work in the local shops, having year-round safe, secure properties, that's one of the best things that you can do to revitalize a neighborhood. And the folks you're looking for, for volunteers, for the West Harwich School, those are the folks who are here, the residents of the community. So I would advise both parties to sit down, and let's talk about some facts. And half-acre lots or quarter-acre lots for historic homes, we have them in town. And if you'd look at an inventory of some of those properties, they sit on very, very small lots today. And just right up Bank Street, and you can see, and please feel free to take the assessor's maps with you so you can see exactly the size of those lots. So just wanted to put some fact in with some of the discussion here tonight, and I think both concepts work. It, the bottom line comes down to what's in the best interest of the Town of Harwich. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So Vicki Goldsmith from Habitat, and at this point, I guess I will thank you for your time tonight. I think we do look forward to talking together. I know Lidaire's suggestion that we switch to a planning grant initially as a show of preliminary support. One of the reasons why we're loath to present a sketch is that then when you start spending serious money on engineering, you find out that your sketch might not work for various reasons, so that's why we may come back through the process that you outlined, looking for some preliminary planning dollars, so that if we come to you with a plan, it's a plan we know that can be engineered and produced. And the last thing, because there was a, a bit of vision discussion tonight, I do want to say that one thing that we do, and one thing that everybody, I know the Selectmen and town leaders are aware that the Cape is actually facing a real demographic crisis where demographers tell us that the economy will implode if we cannot keep younger working people here. We see that in our daily lives. And one of the things when we talk about preserving our history, it's been interesting in me, to me, for example, at a recent, at a recent wall raising in Eastham where the family who were building the home with was introduced as a 12th generational Cape Cod er. I mean, we certainly serve a mix of new residents and multi-generational residents, but when we talk about preserving the, the heritage of our local area, and I know that no one here is in principle opposed to affordable homes or keeping families on Cape Cod, but I want us to also have the same sense of urgency when we look at the possibility of losing some older architectural types of homes, of having that same urgency in terms of maintaining our human resources in this town. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Sally?
Just one final thought, in thinking about all this, if there will be any federal, local, or state funds involved in any of these projects, there is something called the 106 Review, laws put in by our National Historic Preservation people. And in that, it describes, there will be lots of outreach and so forth, and one of the things they highlight is, what are the, what is the vision of the people who are putting forth the historic districting? And in terms of lot size, I don't think so much about the lot size, but what is the view of the house and the barn? That would be the historic view, so we will have this for further discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. One very quick final point. Back in the day when Bob Murray was alive, when Hetch was going to develop this property, 93, 97, excuse me, Route 28, his vision was 20 to 24 rental units, and his idea, and the board's idea, was that we would go to the town and ask to utilize that Willow Street piece, not to develop it, not to dig one spoonful of dirt from it, but to use it for lot coverage. So we could put 20 to 24 units. The new project, Lidaire's project that we're coming forward, is not rentals, it's ownership, and we have no interest at all in the Willow Street property, just so the board understands it isn't kind of in our planning, we have no interest in that property whatsoever.
Understand.
Thank you.
Brooke, you're back, all right.
Questions?
I was counting on it, I was counting on it.
Mr. Peterson actually just had a question, because he mentioned before that it's actually a three-unit structure, that is the Chase House, we're talking about the Chase House. But you, you're, so you're the treasurer of the board for Hetch, but you're also the Realtor essentially for, for Hetch, correct? So, okay, but, but you.
Uncompensated.
Right, that's all right, but pro bono, whatever. But so as your, one of your expertises is marketing, and so you felt that, you felt it was in the best interest when you started placing this structure on the market, not to list it as a multifamily structure. And I, I'm just struck by that, because when the, the executive director for Hetch came to the Housing Committee, she noted that there's a long waiting list for housing through Hetch. And knowing those things, as you're a board member, why did you feel it made more sense to list a building which is a multifamily structure, as you indicated earlier tonight, as a single-family house?
Well, it's not being used at the moment. It's a rooming house. Essentially, it's been turned into a rooming house.
But it's providing housing, it's providing housing-
Absolutely.
For Cape Codders.
Unrelated families.
Okay, right.
Did it start out its life as a single-family home, I'm assuming?
Absolutely. I'm sure the Chase family did.
So, if I, if I just clarify, so your concept then, historic preservation means converting multifamily, including three units, into a single family. That's your interpretation of historic position?
We're not in the business of historic preservation.
But you're in the housing business, correct?
Right, we maximize.
Right.
We've got three separate families.
And, and, and wouldn't it be possible for another owner, the duplex you have next door, you've got that listed as a duplex, wouldn't it be possible for another owner to provide three units of housing?
In the duplex?
No, in the Chase House.
I think you get into individual, individuals' property rights, and someone buys, someone buys the property, they can make it into whatever the law or bylaws will allow them to do.
Why it's been on the market when no one's been responding. So, we have a multifamily unit which we're attempting to sell as a single-family home. So, that may be, I don't know, I'm not a Realtor, but it seems an unusual approach towards that, especially when you're marketing the duplex as a duplex. And then the other point is that if someone were looking to buy property, maybe even to add some housing, they wouldn't have seen this because you have a single family and then a duplex next door. So, I'm just pointing out that it's an unusual marketing concept that's happened. The other point that Mr.-
By the way, it's a great location with some signage out front on 28, so I'm sure people go by and you get some calls.
Right. And the other question that Mr. Peterson raised regarding the schoolhouse, and I think it's a very important consideration, is under Mr. Marion, past town administrator, there was some work done. And ultimately, the plume was not created by the town of Harwich. It's likely came from Dennis, and there's also cleaners, whatever, in the past. So, it was not the liability of the town of Harwich. But what was the, looking at it, they found that there is materials below the site, so you certainly want, wouldn't want to drill down and drink it, or whatever. But it's an ideal site to monitor the plume at that point. The state has worked with residents on North Street to monitor there, but it would be a wonderful location to have monitoring, which would help all of West Harwich to understand, you know, is there any ill effects? And all the tourists, residents, and so forth. No, there are lawyers down the street, and they would benefit as well.
I think Mr. Peterson got over that topic, quite frankly. I think we moved on some-
So, I think that, I think the plume, there are many positives for the town retaining that particular site. The other element, I talked with Mr. Spitz, the town has done some studies on parking in Harwich Port. And there is parking at the schoolhouse, because the other corridor, there's the east-west and north-south, is going towards Bell Neck, Bell's Neck.
Okay.
And so, people do park there. And when we have the Irish Pub Road Race every year, that's one of the parking locations.
I understand.
So, in addition to its other functions, I think there's some continuing things there. So, it has quite a bit of value. But in regard, Mr. Howell mentioned the point of why things are taking so long. I think the approach by the town is to go through the RFP process, which may not have been the best process, but I think Mr. Urbano's showing great leadership in terms of coming forward. And I think, you know, there, there can be adjustments, but I think he's provided a lot of backup in his proposal that went through the CPC project. And there's literally no backup. I realize it's not a request, but if it's going to be one, it really has to be a lot more information. When Mr. Murray came forward on the sites before, there was a lot more information that was coming forward. And so, I think that a very key question is, there should be the same standard for the affordable housing trust on request by anybody, whoever puts it forward. And for the, you know, CBC, there should be backup information. Thank you very much.
Okay. This is, this is a board that hasn't been in place back then when Bob Murray was still around advocating. So, this board, as all boards do, will make its own determination on that when it comes before us. So, thank you. Hello.
Hi, very, very briefly, I thank you, Brooke, for bringing up that point. Hetch is not in the business, and never has been, of displacing people from their homes. So, of course, if anything were to happen, if even if they were purchased right now by a homeowner or somebody who wanted to convert it to their, their own home and not rent either of these places, we would have a plan in place that would rehouse these people. So, I just want to make sure everybody's clear of that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are we done? Do we have some consensus, or some folks are going to yak and talk and meet? And when you're ready, come back and see us or something, hopefully sooner rather than later? And you'll all come back with smiling faces, maybe? So, all right, well, I want to thank you all for participating in this. It's been a very enlightening and informative session for the board, I know for myself. And we look forward to some further, some work in this area, certainly. We can all agree that West Harwich needs some help. So, let's get it some help. Thank you. Anybody wants to hang around? You're welcome to hang around. All right, we'll give a minute to, yeah. And then hopefully, we only need a minute after that. I'm tired. Oh, we got the chief's going to tell us about door-to-door stuff. Okay.
Peter, we also have Rob, Robbins here tonight. The meeting is still going on. Can we clear the room?
Okay. Didn't work too well, did it? So, I'm looking for, I'm looking for the police chief, and I'm looking for Robin. Where's Robin, cemetery commissioner?
Hi, Robin. Thanks for speaking.
Can I just say hi? I'm Joan McCarty.
Joan, nice to meet you.
I'm the senior boss for the-
I'm going to ask you to take your discussions outside, please. We have some business to get to, and there's no Monday Night Football, so we'll be here for a while.
If you don't leave, you have to stay to the end.
So, first thing we have on here is, chief, you want to talk to us about door-to-door? We touched on this a little bit on Saturday, but-
I will be pleasantly brief, Mr. Chairman.
Yay.
Just some, so you've got a copy in front of you. Just so you know, coming right out the gate, this is the Yarmouth model. It's practically word-for-word, which means it's been working for them. I spoke with Chief Frederickson about it, and it's been working with them. And it also means it's passed muster at the AG's office. So, this is on the books in the town of Yarmouth right now.
Chief, how long have they had it in place in Yarmouth?
That I can't answer. I can find out.
A few years, sir?
Yeah, I'm sure, at least, you know. I know that, that the community I came from, it's been on the books for over 20 years, their door-to-door bylaw. So, this is not something new. And I also just want to stress, it's, it's not prohibiting, like I mentioned in our meeting on Saturday, it's not prohibiting door-to-door. It's just an activity that, based, based on the nature of the activity where somebody you don't know is knocking on your door, we feel that it's important to regulate it under a bylaw, which most communities do. And especially important in a, in a community like Harwich, with our aging community, you know, can be a little bit more susceptible to the hard sell, to the unscrupulous sales techniques. Not that that, not that all door-to-door people are like that either. I don't want to paint everybody with the same brush. It's just that my law enforcement experience, it has been used in a number of different ways, going up and knocking on doors. So, that's why these bylaws came about.
And I think you also told us, chief, that someone wanted to request to be on the no-knocking, or whatever you call it.
Yeah, the no solicitation list, exactly.
Then they can just call the police station, I guess, and get on that list? Is that the way that would work?
Exactly. That's, that's one of the very good points of this that I liked. I looked at a number of different bylaws from different communities, and I really liked this one, that the residents can sign up with us for, to be on the no solicitation list. And that means they can't come to your door, even if they get permitted through us. And if they do, it's a violation, $300 fine, second offense, revocation of the license. I can take any, any specific questions you may have on it, or just run, do a quick overview if you want, or if you're all set. Either way.
Janelle, Janelle's the question.
Does this preclude people who are not necessarily coming to sell you something, but maybe just to offer information, for instance, religious groups?
Religious groups are usually exempt. It, it has to do with some kind of monetary, monetary gain from the people that are knocking on your door.
Can Girl Scouts sell cookies?
Actually, no. I mean, that's, yeah. They would, obviously, we would guide them through the permitting process, but if we went by the letter of the law, no.
And raffle tickets, obviously, no.
Right, anything selling, anything having to do with selling.
I understand. Yeah, 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 ma'am.
I have a question for you.
Get to the mic, please.
I have a question. When they get permitted from you, must they wear a sign? And the reason I ask is, the neighbor across the street from me had somebody, a young gentleman, knock on the door and open it and walk into her kitchen. And the first thing I said to her when she told me about that, I said, was he wearing any kind of a-
ID.
ID. And she said, at that point, she was like so beside herself that he knocked and walked in the door, that she didn't notice whether he was wearing that. But should they have something that you can see immediately, not that you would have to ask them?
Excellent point. It allows me to, to address that issue. This bylaw allows us a lot of leeway in the permitting process. We oversee it. And that would be one of the things, again, the community I came from, we, we had landed with a photo ID that said door-to-door sales permit. So, yes. This is not in effect right now, so, okay? This is something we are proposing.
By the way, this would have to go to town meeting, and would have to be passed by a two-thirds vote, so.
And then on to the AG's office for the final-
On to the AG, to make sure it's legal, yeah. So, you're talking about sometime, like a year from now, it might be in place.
Right.
If it were, it was adopted. So, okay? Any other questions? All right, chief, you can go home now.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Thanks for keeping that crowd under control, by the way. You guys did a good job. The only reason they were calm and quiet was because you guys are out there. That's, we could tell. Yeah. Okay, Robin, we want to talk about pet cemeteries, right? Or one pet cemetery? Or one pet, or something?
Good evening.
I do have a, I'm Robin Kelly, the cemetery administrator. Article 59, that's on, there actually is, the language in it was incorrect, and part of it said, at the bottom said, pet crematory and pet scattering grounds. It should say pet crematory and pet cemetery. Because we want to do both scattering of ashes there, as well as selling burial space for pets.
I'm confused. The, the one I'm looking at says, develop a pet scattering ground and pet crematory. So, you want it to read how?
I want it to say pet crematory and pet cemetery. Because you're going to do both things. You're going to, some people won't want their pets cremated, so we need a space to bury them if they're going to bury them. So, if we say scattering grounds, it won't give people options, they will have to have them cremated, so we don't want to-
I do think we made the change, but this one is from last week that you have in your package.
I was going to say.
I was just trying to get clear as to what-
Oh, oh, is it, has it already been changed?
Yeah. So, they, they have the old version. It was just changed this morning.
It was changed this morning.
Wait, so let me ask a question. What is the article number?
59.
59.
59, okay.
On the one online, that's what it is.
This says, establish a wetlands revolving fund, so that's not it.
So, it's the one on the packet.
57.
57, let's look at that.
So, clearly, we've dropped articles.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we dropped a few articles.
Okay, pet cemetery and pet crematorium, all right. Crematory, got it.
I did, I did give you guys a new updated sheet. You asked me questions when I met with you before. So, I did contact and find out that the funds all do get deposited into the general fund in both Duxbury and Plymouth, the two other municipalities that have crematories. I actually put in their balances, what they deposited this year, in the little sheet that I handed out to you, as well as, the only one that has similar size would be probably Plymouth. They have one full-time cremationist and one part-time. We're not going for that this year. We're just going to, for the transfer of the land. But I thought it would be helpful for you to have all this information in your packet.
Robin, did I hear somewhere that, is it somebody does this privately somewhere around here?
Chad. I heard that, too, Chatham.
Yeah, in, in their, they have a, inside their building, they do have a small, I, I think it's an inciner, it's an incinerating machine. I don't think it's a cremation door, but I could be wrong.
What's the difference?
Ah.
I mean, the temperature?
I guess it would be a little bit different.
Results are the same, aren't they?
Probably the same. I have been contacting all of the veterinarians in the local area, so I have a list of all of them, and I've been reaching out to them, telling them that we were planning on building a cemetery, as well as thinking about doing the crematory. And I've got back a lot of positive feedback from them as well. A few of them are tied into contracts with different people already, but they said that they review those yearly. So, at, when we're going to open, we would just give them information on what, how price point is, and what their price point is, and we'll see from there.
So, in your mind, are we, would we not be competing with this operation in Chatham?
No.
Because they're doing something different?
They're doing it just for the people in their actual-
Veterinary practice.
In their practice. They don't do it, it's not like a-
Okay, so if I call, if I wasn't, if I wasn't part of their clientele, but I called up and said I had to dispose of a dog or something-
I don't know that they would have the capacity to run all the time like that over there. It's a small operation.
I just want to make sure we're not, you know, as a municipality, creating some business that's competing with a bunch of private people.
Right. I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's the issue, no.
All right.
We'd probably be competing with the two bigger crematories, which would be Plymouth. And then the other one is Angelview, which is in Middle Borough.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for being patient and staying.
Oh, no problem.
Thank you. Okay. What else we have? We did a lot of warrant stuff on Saturday.
Just on the warrant, we did make adjustments, and I don't know if she, I don't think she had a chance to, to ship it around, but we certainly can. We moved the snow and ice to the special, and we had a new one created for the community center insurance item that I had talked about, the insurance settlement. And then the CPC one, we took that out, assuming that CPC will get back to us on the $50,000, whether they want to have that on or not. And whether or not it's two articles or one? Correct. I am still in awe of your explanation of the mass general law on this $20,000 on the community center. What a nutty process. Yeah, I think somebody had mentioned, and is probably right, you know, I mean, just seeing the way some of these laws get created, that there was probably some town somewhere where somebody got an insurance settlement, walked away with it, and there was no town meeting oversight, though.
Got it. Okay.
So, those were the, the changes in, in terms of the, the warrant, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Just those three items.
Anybody else have anything on the warrant, specifically?
I just have one little tiny thing. I'm a grammar fanatic.
You read it? I didn't read it, yeah?
I read part of it.
Oh, good, okay, good.
Yeah. And on Article 9, Part 8, vacations, the new verbiage, the very last sentence says, this provision shall be retroactive back to July 1st. That's redundant. Retroactive, retroactive, retroactive is back, so I would say just take out the word "back."
That's fine.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just a grammar, grammar person, you know?
Make sure you read the rest of it, so you can catch them.
I will, I will, with a fine-tooth comb.
All right. Anything else on that? Okay, Chris, you have anything else?
Enough for, regarding the warrant.
Okay, selectmen? Janelle, oh, I'm sorry, Janelle.
Well, just on the town administrator's report.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were...
Yeah, I thought we were finishing up the warrant. I just had two, two quick things.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I won't, I won't keep it long.
It's okay.
I, I realize, Charlene's not here tonight because she's under the weather, so I'm flying solo, just to, the people, and I think she'll be back, just something, a stomach bug or something. On, it's my intent to bring budget amendment number one. There was quite a bit of activity on Saturday, so we kind of started to go through and, and look at that, so I hope to have that wrapped up by the middle of the week and have that back to the board in a form of budget amendments. That's what we've been doing, to kind of, anytime we make a change, we, we do that. And then also, I just wanted to comment, I went out today, the, the folks from AmeriCorps, the volunteers were down, and they were constructing the path, Bayview Path, down to the water.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that wa, that project, it was basically starting and finished today. I think they had about 15 volunteers, it looked like. I, I did see, Bill was, Bill came into the office, so we went down, so he has a few pictures, and hopefully we'll have some kind of presentation done of just the, the kids that did the work.
Good.
It's all volunteer labor, so it, it's nice that they came out, and it's nice they had a nice day. But I just wanted to comment, and just, Amy Uelski was the one really coordinating that, and again, just, she does such a phenomenal job, it just...
Are there neighbors down there now? Do you know? I mean, are they all gone for the winter?
Actually, Jack came back to see that, yeah.
Oh, did he?
So, I know the one, at least one was around.
Yeah, that'll be interesting to get people's feedback, reactions on what they think.
That concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chairman, on your, your report.
Yeah, first, I'm sorry I had to leave the other day. My daughter was ill. I did miss the part of the meeting that discussed the selectmen stipend, and I wanted to bring it up. I was hoping that, I didn't get to see the, the video yet of the meeting, but I was hoping Chris brought it up.
You did bring it up, did? You did bring it up, and my comment, my comment instantly, I didn't hear about it before, was that as sitting selectmen, as sitting selectmen, those of us who are currently elected, I don't think it's appropriate for us to take that topic up, quite frankly.
Well, the reason I did, I just wanted to explain my position. I had had a meeting with Chris earlier in the week, where he told me that last year he had suggested a raise of $1,000 per person, and simply put it into the budget. And so I had texted Chris the day before, what should I do about proposing a raise for, and he had told me I could bring it up that day. But because I wasn't here, I left it to Chris to bring up. I just want people to understand why I'm, I'm proposing that there be a raise. I used to get a grant for childcare for the summer, which is when I make most of my money in, in the massage field. I make it July and August, about 80% of my income in two months. So my children have to go to a summer camp. They always go to the one at the Harwich Elementary School. And I, because I'm a single mother of two, I actually qualify for a grant for them to receive part of the Bailey Boyd's stip, uh, grant that we voted on back in January, I believe. And because I voted on that this year, now that both children are actually going to be going to the school camp, I am now ineligible for this grant. And so, that's a real bummer for me, because, you know, the, the selectman stipend of $1,500, and it's taxed, it's not truly a stipend, I found out. It's, it's, we're looked upon as employees by the powers that be. It's a real bummer, and I feel like for the amount of work that we do, there should be a little bit more. And also the fact, now that I can't get, sit for this grant, it's, wanted people to understand where I was coming from when I asked for this.
We, we definitely understand the circumstances, and I saw the letter from the, whatever it was, Ethics Commission or whatever, it's kind of crazy, but anyhow, it, it is what it is. I think several years ago, well, I don't know, it was four years ago or so, when, when town meeting decided that selectmen would not be eligible for insurance, medical insurance, health insurance. You know, as people went through the system, in other words, if you were on it, once that was passed, you got to stay on it until you left being a selectman, or it was a deadline, But once that was taken away, there was never anything that came back to say, okay, we'll make it, we'll improve the compensation because we took it apart. One of the, the gripes was that some people took medical insurance, some didn't. So let's just pretend that medical insurance is $10,000. If you took it as a selectman and I didn't, in theory, you're getting a $10,000 benefit more than I am, okay?
On text.
What, what, what the hope was, was that there would be a proposal brought forward after that to say, pick a number, that selectmen should make, I don't know, $5,000 a year, whatever the number is, and you could spend it any way you want. You can spend it on health insurance, you can spend it at the casino, whatever you wanted to do.
It's camp?
But everybody, yeah, whatever, but everybody would get treated the same. Now, that hasn't happened, it didn't happen, so here we are at $1,500, so... And, and I, for one, think it's, for sitting selectmen, I think somebody else has to do that work. Maybe it's going to be Mr. DeCosta or whatever, I mean, it's gonna be Leo sitting on there, I don't know, whatever, but I think it really, and, and I said on Saturday, by the way, that Angela and I, who are done next year, are parting shot, if nobody does it, will, for us to put a petition article together to do something about this. Because we think that's important, but it doesn't solve your problem today.
You'll also find that, you'll also find that the $1,000 more isn't enough.
Mr. DeCosta?
Doesn't cover the cost.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Chairman of the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee did take up the question when it was asked by a town meeting prior to putting together the, the law that, that took away the benefits. The Finance Committee took that on because you, I believe you're correct, at least thinking about it in terms of sitting selectmen deciding their own salary, just not a good technical way to go. And what we did was, we formed a subcommittee of three members of the Finance Committee and three members from the public, that went through that and, and came up with the recommendations that, that we came up with. And, and I think it was a pretty good package that town meeting eventually supported. I'll just suggest to my board that we do the same thing and, and look at salaries. We still have plenty of time to do that between now and town, this town meeting, but it is something that we did talk about during that process, that after everybody was off, and now that is the case, that we would again look at that. So I'll suggest the same avenue that we had before of a subcommittee with three selectmen and three members of the public, and we'll just advertise for that, and, and talk about it and, and see where that goes.
You mean three members of the Finance Committee?
Three members of the Finance Committee.
You said three selectmen.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
It's late.
Three members of the Finance Committee and three members of the...
Because quite frankly, I don't think we want anything to do with it.
Right, no. We'll, we'll do it, we'll hand it, and we'll come back, and we'll either have a recommendation or we won't, and, and do it that way.
Thank you.
If that, if that seems like, that's something we're gonna do, whether you ask us to or not.
All right. Anyhow, Leo, did you ever comment? You don't have to, it's okay.
I just think we're spring, the public meeting tomorrow, and selectmen's report will have to...
Okay, all right.